Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the City Council meeting to order for May the 6th, 2014. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Here.
Patty.
Here.
Tenet.
Here.
Shopmar.
Here.
Adams.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Gray. Marsh.
Here.
Mayor Jordan.
Here.
Would you join me in resigning the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and justice for all.
Okay. The first order business we have tonight is the, uh, Annual Arkansas Recreation and Parks Association Annual Conference Awards. Connie, I believe you have this?
Connie Edmondson, Fayetteville Parks and Recreation Director. I am pleased to announce that, uh, our city won three, uh, awards at our Arkansas Recreation Park Association meeting this year, and I was gonna announce those. First of all, we won the Volunteer of the Year, the Fayetteville Chain Game Disc Golf Club. Ray Moore and Ben Huss, would you all come up?
(laughing).
The Fayetteville Chain Game is a disc golf club that began in 2009 with only ten members. Now, it consists of a hundred and fifteen dedicated members who have donated over four-hundred-and-fifty hours of labor to maintain the disc golf course at Lake Fayetteville North Shore and to create a disc golf course at Walker Park. The club has partnered with the Parks and Recreation Department to fund new tee pads and have created and installed new signs and markers. The Fayetteville Chain Game was established to promote the sport of disc golf and to get people active in a low-impact recreational sport. The club is very community-minded, hosting tournaments where the proceeds of this year, seventy-five-hundred dollars went to the food banks. Uh, the re- so, we're very proud this year to award the Arkansas Recreation Park Association Volunteer Group of the Year to the Disc Golf Chain Club. Thank you all. Our next award is the Individual Volunteer of the Year. We know why our city is the city's Volunteer of the Year city. Diane Gaynor, she is a valuable citizen and community volunteer who contributed to the city's community gardens in the parks as a community garden leader. Diane brought many years of valuable gardening experience and had previously participated in community gardens. Her love for the outdoors and working with people made her a national- a natural fit as a community garden leader. Diane initiated the Food to Share Program, which is an effort to help increase the supply of fresh produce in Fayetteville. Diane donated over three-hundred-and-fifty hours working at the garden, delivering fresh foods, communicating with gardens, gardeners, and organizing garden tasks and events. Because of Diane's dedication, our community garden in the parks is a successful citizen-based community program. Thank you, Diane, for all your work. And, the awards go on and on. We also won, uh, the Natural Resource Award, and that went to Lake Fayetteville Prairie Restoration Project, and one of the masterminds behind that is our own Byron Humphrey, our Park Maintenance Superintendent. Hope he'd come up. The area around Lake Fayetteville Park was lunch, uh, encompassed extensive tall grass prairie and oak savanna when first encountered by early travelers and settlers over two centuries ago. Historic Butterfield Trail, a twenty-eight-hundred-mile mail route connecting St. Louis to San Fras- San Francisco runs through Lake Fayetteville Park. Parks and Recreation Department partnered with the Fayetteville Natural Heritage Association and Environmental Study Center, uh, and they provided volunteers to remove invasive plants, species, and the city provided manpower and funding to create the fire lines, conduct prescribed burns, and to seed native plants as needed on approximately thirty-nine acres there at Lake Fayetteville. Now, the area is predominantly composed of native grasses that include blue, uh, big blue stem, little blue stem, Indian grass, and split bearded blue stem. Many of these native grasses established themselves from existing seedbanks that have long lain dormant. Response of the public to this project has been outstanding. The prairie has become a popular spot for birdwatching, outdoor enthusiasts, and history buffs. The Environmental Study Center has incorporated the prairie into part of their curriculum, and classes from the University of Arkansas have used the prairie to conduct field labs and plant identification exercises. Users of the trails have received a firsthand look at what early pioneers saw when they first arrived to this country, a prairie in the mountains. So, Byron Humphrey and team, Lake, I guess, the Fayetteville Natural Heritage Group and the Environmental Study Center, we thank you for your great work.
Okay. Congratulations. Um, the second thing we have tonight is the quarterly finance report from Paul Becker. First quarter of 2014.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, this is a report on revenues and expenditures for the city for the first quarter, which is through March. Uh, as we know, we started off through January pretty rocky as far as sales taxes were concerned. However, we bounced back pretty well in February. Right about now in the general fund, we're down compared to budget about $200,000, but there's a good chance we could bank up and hit the revenue estimates by the end of the year. Now, fortunately, some of that's been covered by intergovernmental revenues, which is up a bit, but right now, we're down about $200,000 from budget, uh, at this point in time. We said at that point in time, we thought that might be weather-related, and we've had some evidence of that. As far as the parking fund is concerned, parking funds are just about where they were last year, up slightly, about $40,000 more at this point in time through the first quarter. HMR taxes are pretty flat. Normally, they grow consistently, but through the first quarter, they're pretty flat. That could have something to do with the, with weather conditions. Also, as far as our enterprise funds, water and sewer is about on line with where we expected it. We are progressing with the capital program moving forward. Uh, solid waste funds revenues are about what we had expected. They're up about 3% right now. However, if you look, you can see we've spent much more than we've taken in as we pursue the capital program that we have in place for solid waste. And remember, this year, with the capital, uh, and other expenditures, we will get in the fund balance by about, uh, $3 million or so. So, we're catching up with the capital program there. So, everything's pretty well where we expected it, down a little bit, but I think we're catching up, and we'll see what happens with the sales tax for March. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
What questions do we have for Paul on that? Okay. Thank you, Paul. The next order of business tonight is the consent agenda. Number one, approval of the April 15th, 2014 City Council Meeting minutes. Number two, animal services donation revenue, resolution to approve a budget adjustment in a total amount of $9,588, representing donation revenue to the animal services for the first quarter of 2014. Number three, 2014 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program, resolution to authorize a 50% matching grant application to the 2014 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program, seeking a grant in the amount of $42,000 for the replacement of body armor vests for the federal police officers and emergency response team officers. Number four, Garver LLC, a resolution to approve a professional engineering services agreement with Garver LLC for surveying and design services related to the installation propane fueling system at Happy Hollow Maintenance Site, in the amount of $33,800, approving the project contingency of $3,380 and approving a budget adjustment. Number five, bid number 10-47, King Electric Contractors, resolution to authorize a contract with King Electrical Contractors in the amount of $37,770 pursuant to bid number 10-47 for the installation of LED trail light fixtures and light poles along the Chalagie Trail and to approve a 10% project contingency. Number six, bid number 14-23, First Light and Watley Incorporated, resolution to authorize the purchase of LED trail light fixtures from First Light of Tulsa in the amount of $87,048 plus applicable sales tax and to authorize the purchase of light poles from Watley Incorporated in the amount of $29,744 plus applicable sales tax pursuant to bid number 14-23 for installation along the Chalagie Trail. Number seven, McClellan Consulting Engineers Incorporated, resolution to authorize a pers- professional engineering services agreement with McClellan Consulting Engineers Incorporated in the amount of $371,396 for design and related services for improvements, design, road. Number eight, Jorgensen Associates Incorporated, resolution to authorize a professional engineering services agreement with Jorgensen Associates Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $387,000 for design and related services for the extension of Rubeau Road from Persimmon Street to Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. Number nine, amend resolution 218-13, a resolution to amend resolution number 218-13 to approve a change order and authorize a payment in the amount of $3,451.74 to Royal Communications Incorporated for Phase One of the Access Control Project, authorize a payment of $25,459, and 11 cents to Royal Communications Incorporated for equipment already purchased for Phase Two, to cancel the existing contract with Royal Communications Incorporated for, for Phases Two and Three, to approve a contract with Electrolink Incorporated through RFP 13-11 for Phase Two and Three of Access Control Project in the total amount of $42,206, to authorize a 10% project contingency and to approve a budget adjustment. Number 10, RJN Group Incorporated, resolution to approve a contract with RJN Group Incorporated in the amount of $56,000 for professional engineering services and to approve a budget adjustment. Number 11, Whole Foods Incorporated, resolution to express the City Council's intention to pay for the installation of a traffic signal at Sonic Drive and College Avenue if Whole Foods Incorporated constructs its store at this intersection and to approve a budget amount of $150,000. Number 12, CH2M Hill Engineers Incorporated, amendment number five, resolution to approve amendment number five to the agreement for operations, maintenance, and management services between the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas and CH2M Hill Engineers Incorporated, to increase the contract in the amount of $80,632 and to approve a budget adjustment. Number 13, CH2M Hill Engineers Incorporated, resolution to exercise a new five-year option to renew the agreement for operation, maintenance, and management services between the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas and CH2M Hills Incorporated. And number 14, Bio Based Realty LLC, a resolution to accept Bio Based Realty LLC offer of $200,000 in satisfaction of the city's right to receive a portion of the increased sales price of the raw land sold to Bio Based Realty LLC if such land is sold within 10 years.
(inaudible) consent agenda is read.
We have motion, second, to approve the consent agenda as read. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Patty.
Yes.
Tenet.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. We have nothing on our unfinished business. On new business, number one, Lozen Associates Incorporated, amendment number one, oh, sorry, yes.
Um, I'd like to move that we adjust the order of the agenda and deal with, uh, item eight, Block Avenue Parking First.
Okay.
And we have a lot of people here in the audience that would like to comment on this.
All right. Uh, is that a motion?
Yes.
Of motion, second, to move Block Street to the first item of new business. Any discussion on that? All right. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Patty.
Yes.
Tenet.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Okay. Number one, then, Block Avenue Parking, resolution to reaffirm the back-end parking sign on Block Avenue between Dixon Street and Spring Street. Okay.
Thank you, Alderman Patty. I appreciate that. (laughing). Uh, just to give you a, a history of Block Avenue, uh, how we got to this point. In 2010, we began design on this project early in 2010. Uh, had several public meetings with, with property owners and businesses and, and other interested citizens, uh, looked at different concepts, and, um, ultimately settled on the, the concept that you, that you see out there constructed. Um, the discussion at that time, uh, the concerns of the businesses were the, the lack of parking. And so, uh, this concept, uh, we took a two-lane, um, one-way street with parallel parking, very few parallel parking spaces, and added the angled parking with the, with the single-lane one-way street, uh, so we increased the, the number of spaces. Um, the al- the other goals of the project were to, uh, reduce the speed of traffic, uh, make it more pedestrian-friendly so by narrowing the throats at the intersections, um, that, that helped reduce the, the speeds, made it much safer. Uh, so we feel like the goals of the project all were, were fully realized. Uh, back-end parking was something that was presented as a, sort of a test case, uh, something that had been done in other cities. Uh, we recognized the, the benefits, uh, those cities realized benefits, uh, the improved safety. You can see, when you pull out, you don't have to back out into traffic. Uh, for folks who are, have little, small children, uh, they can back into the space, open their car doors, and it opens out towards the sidewalk versus out into the street. And then, if you have packages or other things that you need to put in your trunk, you're not out standing out in the street with traffic going by. So, uh, those were the benefits of the, uh, the back-end parking. Uh, after that was constructed, uh, there was a, a lot of concern for folks. It was, it was new, it was different. Uh, and so, in 2010, uh, in October, the Street Committee at the time considered making changes to that. We developed some cost estimates, uh, through the Transportation Division, and ultimately, due to the cost and the fact that that had just been done, uh, there were no changes made at the time. Uh, so, fast forward to, uh, just recently in, in, uh, March of this year, uh, a citizen requested that we review this again, uh, and so, the Transportation Committee looked at this, um, we presented cost estimates for, for it again. Uh, the committee decided to take no action other than to forward it on to the City Council. Uh, so, the proposal that is in front of you is to change the back-end parking to pull-in parking. There are two options that are provided. Uh, one of the options is to leave the islands as they are. Um, that results in a loss of, make sure I have the numbers right here, um, results in a loss of eight parking spaces from 28 to 20. Uh, it's a little bit cheaper because we're not adjusting the islands. Uh, $28,000 is the estimate from our Transportation Division. Uh, the second option is if we, we did go ahead and change all of the concrete islands, reconfigure them, point them in the opposite direction essentially. Uh, that, uh, we still lose three parking spaces from 28 to 25, and the cost, because of the additional concrete work, is a little bit more at, at forty, a little under $43,000. Um, because of the cost and, um, the, the work plan that the Transportation Division has, uh, this would be something difficult that would, would be incorporated, to be incorporated into their work plan. Uh, it could be looked at for future years, but, uh, as we've said before, it would impact other projects. Um, and, again, the back-end parking, we feel like has done the job. It, the, the benefits of the back-end parking, parking that we discussed prior to the construction, we feel like have been realized. Uh, it gets used on a regular basis, and so, uh, from a staff standpoint, uh, we do not recommend any changes. And with that, I'll take questions.
What questions do we have for Chris on this?
I have one, actually.
Sure, go ahead.
Do you have one?
Go ahead.
Um, we may have discussed this in the times that we've talked, and please remind me if, if I'm just lost here, but, um, the existing islands, if those were removed, we wouldn't lose any parking spaces if we made changes. Is that true?
If you totally removed the spaces or totally removed the islands?
Yeah.
Um, we didn't evaluate that. Some of those islands are to protect driveway, so we would need to leave those in place.
Okay.
Um, but I, I don't know the answer to that. If we, if we eliminated some of the islands, if we would gain back those three spaces or not?
My follow-up question to that would be, would that change the cost if we took the islands out? I would think that demolition of those might add cost to it. I don't know that, but...
Well, yeah, I think if you took them out totally, um, it would be comparable to the higher of the two costs.
Yeah.
Rebuilding them versus taking them out, filling it in, putting it back asphalt, I think would be, would be somewhere comparable.
Okay. Cause I, I hear, I hear both good and bad about those islands. I think, um, the ones along Dixon Street make very fancy ashtrays, for the most part, but I think the ones on Block Street, I don't know. I just worry sometimes that they don't serve as much of a purpose as parking would be there, uh, and maybe figuring out another way to put, um, green space or whatever the, the point may be there. But, anyway, that was my only question. I appreciate it.
Okay. Sarah?
Um, Chris, do you, is it true that some of those islands provide stormwater filtration services? So, those are not just decorative features, they're actually functional?
That is correct. We, we did. That was another thing that we, that we wanted to do as part of the project, is sort of test out, uh, some LID islands. So, the stormwater does, uh, run through those islands. We have some, um, uh, rock kind of channel areas so the water runs through. It helps filter out cigarette butts, some of those sort of things, um, so the first flush of, of drainage. Uh, the water just is able to continue on pass in the higher rainfall events, but yes, it does provide a, a filtration aspect.
So, it does provide an ecological service, but beyond just beautification. And then, um, I've never had trouble backing into those spaces, but if I did, um, how far away would I have to park to access a pull-in front space?
Uh, there is a city parking lot at the corner of Spring and, um, Block, which is just at the, at the end of this block.
So, less than a block?
Right. There, there also are, um, pull-in parking spaces on the other two blocks of Block Avenue towards the square, so...
Okay. And then, uh, what about a parallel space?
Um, there are a couple of parallel spaces on, on, uh, right at the very, um, north end of Block Avenue, and then, of course, along Dixon Street as well.
On Dixon Street. So, less than a block, I could find, um, a variety of other ways to park my car if I was uncomfortable doing it back in. All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. I suppose y'all would like to take some public comment? Okay. We will take public comment on this issue. Everybody gets one turn at the microphone unless the council member brings you back up to ask you questions. Uh, introduce yourself and, and your address is what we normally do, and, um, who would like to be first? Yes.
My name is Nancy Biddle, and I live at 2761 North Timber Glen Lane, Fayetteville, Arkansas, 72701. I've been referred to lately on social med- media as a complaining non-resident, so I'd like to explain myself a little bit. I've had a Fayetteville zip code for 45 years. Thirty-eight of those years were in the city limits of Fayetteville, and about seven years ago, my husband and I moved about a mile and a half past the border of Fayetteville. My husband and I own property in Fayetteville, and he's owned a business on South College Avenue for 44 years. Our two adult children live in the city limits, and they own businesses. My husband served as chairman of the Civil Service Commission for several years, and he had to resign when we moved outside the city limits by a mile, mile and a half about seven years ago. He also chaired three successful millage campaigns for the Fayetteville Public School System. He served as chairman of the Chamber of Commerce twice. We love Fayetteville. We support cooperative emergency outreach, the Boys and Girls Club. We are Fayettevillians to the heart. I sit on the board of the Fayetteville Public Education Foundation, well, where we give out over $100,000 every year to teachers and schools who cannot obtain the funding through the regular school budget. We have financially supported the election of many officials in Fayetteville, many of whom we are not eligible to vote for because of moving a mile and a half outside of the city, city limits, but we consider it very important who our leadership is because we love Fayetteville and we have nothing but the best intentions for Fayetteville. I say all this not to boast, but to, to let you know for sure, I'm a protagonist for Fayetteville and not an antagonist. We love Fayetteville, and we believe viable business is the lifeblood of Fayetteville. That's what brought me here. We conduct business and spend money in Fayetteville every day, and we personally do business on Blocks One, Two, and Three of Block Avenue. I find the parking a whole lot easier in Blocks Two and Three, and I had a very ridiculous encounter with the back-end parking this March. I, you said it's not difficult for you, but it really, really is for me, and, uh, it was an embarrassing situation. Had to go around the block three times. I won't go into all the details. I told the Transportation Committee that story. But I then went to see the mayor after I spoke to some of the businesses, after I had this, this encounter with Block back-end parking, and I found out that they've really had a struggle there in Block One, and their patrons have had, a lot of their patrons have had a struggle. So, I went to see the mayor, who I knew to be a reasonable man, and he agreed to relook at the situation, and I appreciate that, Mayor Jordan. Let me stress, this is all very out of character for me. I've never done anything like this in my life. And Mayor, I enjoy your quotations on Facebook, and a couple of weeks ago, you had one by Thomas Edison, and he said, "Our greatest weakness lies in giving up. The most certain way to succeed is always to try just one more time." So, I'm here following Thomas Alva's, uh, uh, admonition, and I'm gonna try one more time. Block has been touted as the gateway to the square, but it doesn't exactly always put the welcome at, out for everyone. The parking on Block One is difficult for a lot of residents and visitors to Fayetteville, especially the elderly and the handicapped. Many visitors just don't get it. Some try and give up. Some come up Block, go in the wrong direction, and pull in the front ways. And some, some want get it, but then they get a ticket if they're touching a line. It's not very warm and friendly. It doesn't seem nearly as user-friendly as Blocks Two and Three do. And in turn, that's harmful to the businesses in Block One, and it discourages future business from coming to Block One. I'm sure you've all read and seen the pictures of the accident, the unfortunate accident that occurred a couple of weeks ago. A gentleman attempted to back-end park. He, uh, took a meter out, crossed the sidewalk, he ended up on the property and into the property of a house on Block One. I love those, uh, those nice sidewalks and street lamps there that were part of the Block Street Enhancement Project, and I appreciate that aspect of it. But what if there had been a pedestrian right there when that occurred? Just think about that. Emissions. A visitor to Fayetteville from Germany made a comment recently when he saw the Block Avenue parking format, that this would never go in his city in Germany because of emissions, harmful emissions directed at pedestrians. I wouldn't wanna be strolling my three little precious darling grandsons down Block and have a couple of cars fire up right when we're passing and have those emissions be spewed right in our faces. One argument that we've heard is that it's safer for unloading children, but a local judge pointed out to me recently that when backing into those spaces, you can't see a child. And it would only take one time for a parent to be looking the other direction or for a parent with several children to lose control of one and be in the path of that backing in car. in car, and I don't even want to think about it. I looked into a lot of this. I did my homework and I read up online about other cities that have used this format, and the mayor told me it's a form of the new urbanism, and it was, we were emulating some of these other cities. And they list a lot of the same reasons for having it there as have been cited here. But if you dig deeper into the blogs of the citizenry of those places, you'll find many of the same complaints, many of the things that people don't care for. They say it's difficult. They say that they just opt to not do business there anymore. Some say they just don't even go down that street anymore. It's just not real user-friendly. One such street is Congress in Austin. But like many other places that have rear-entry parking, it's mostly on a wide street like Congress. It's not on a compacted, narrow street like Block Avenue. I've learned too, that more than, often than not, I've discovered that usually the format is to have the rear-entry parking, then to have a bike lane, then to have through traffic, then a center line, then through traffic going the opposite direction, then another bike lane, and then parallel parking. It's good in a lot of ways. It's wider, it's easier to negotiate, and it gives people an option of, if they're not comfortable with rear-end parking, to parallel park on the opposite side of the street. But it's on much wider streets, obviously, to accomplish that. I think it might well go over in Fayetteville on a much wider, open area, but it's so hard to negotiate in that narrow, little, compact I will say that in the diagrams I've read online, they show the ideal world for this form of parking being staggered, perfectly staggered, so that when you pull out of your parking, you barely have to pull forward because the car next to you is back away. But I've learned that in the real world, that's really not the way it ends up down there. It ends up that most cars are more parked in alignment with each other. So when I look to my left to pull out of a parking, I only see another car. This is due, I think, to a lot of reasons. I think not everybody pulls all the way in. Some cars are taller, some cars are wider, some cars are longer. There's all kinds of factors that enter into this, but it ends up that in order to pull out of this space, you're having to pull out from this situation quite far into the lane of traffic to see if anybody's coming. And I realize that that's the same case in Block 2 and 3 in backing out of planted parking. It's the same on the square. But the advantage we have in those situations is rear lights on a car. They signal to oncoming traffic that somebody's backing out. Here, you have the front of the car coming straight out. Obviously, nosing out, nosing out, nudging out, the oncoming traffic is coming. And I don't feel like that's safe for cyclists either. No reverse lights to warn oncoming traffic. Money. The project in 2010 was quite expensive. $331,273 were spent, and it was approved only by a committee, the street committee, and by city staff. It never went to the full city council, sitting council at that time. That seems like a very large amount of money for a project that had experimental parking and not full council approval. I guess the bottom line is, we're haggling tonight about possibly spending $28,000 or $42,000 to rectify this situation, but where in the world was the haggling in 2010 about spending a third of a million dollars for an experimental format of parking? And if it was so effective, why was it not continued into Blocks 2 and 3 when it was originally slated to be done so? That's been a question all along. We tend to find the money we need to do the things we want. In yesterday's paper, a contingency fund was discussed. It said that after taking $150,000, possibly taking it, out of that fund to use on a new traffic light at the Masonic and South College intersection to enable traffic flow for the potential opening of the Whole Foods there, which, by the way, I'm totally for, but I'm going to stay out of everything else, so that doesn't really matter. But it said that there would be more than $1.4 million left in this contingency fund after $150,000 is pulled out, possibly pulled out for this traffic light. I am really hopeful that part of this fund, 2% to 3% of this fund, could be used to correct what I feel is an error in judgment on Block 1 of Block Avenue, and to treat the current businesses there the same way that the businesses in Blocks 2 and 3 are treated, to give them all an equal playing field, and to encourage more businesses to come to Block 1 to further enhance it as the gateway to the square. And I thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Nancy. Who would like to address us next?
Mayor Jordan, my name is Diane Modisette. I live at 1923 East Joyce Boulevard. I have been a resident of Fayetteville for 50 years. When I came 50 years ago, everything that I did was around, of course, Block Street, Campbell Bell, Lewis Brothers, Pennies, all of the wonderful places. That's where we went, to St. Paul's Church for Mother's Morning Out, or to Central Methodist. I have learned to love this place. I have only come to you once before in my 50 years of living in Fayetteville. Recently, I have felt I have lost my dignity. This is how I feel every time I back into the parking space on Block Street. I have been told that I must be between the lines or I will find a parking ticket on my windshield when I return to my automobile. Backing into an angled parking space is new to me. Impatient cars, as many as three, in a line behind me while I'm trying to park have made it very, very difficult to me. The drivers have blown their horns, driven up dangerously close to my car, and have given me unkind comments. Several times, I have driven around the block to come back again, to start my quest again, to back into one of those parking spaces. As far as I know, there was not much concern for the people or the citizens of Fayetteville when this planning began for this expensive mistake. How many of us have practiced backing into an angled space? I do not know of another place, but I guess many of you do, in other cities where this has been done, but believe me, this is my first. I have found myself going to another street and parking in the cold, icy weather. I am a person with an artificial hip and two artificial knees. I have to find my way to another place because I am unable to navigate the space that is required for me to park in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, who would like to address us next?
Hello, I'm Camille Garland. I live at 2824 Club Oak in Fayetteville, and I happen to work at Shag's Lawn, which is one of the main businesses on Shag, I mean, on Block that has been the most highly affected. I've lived here for 16 years, and I've worked in the downtown area the entire time. We used to be on Spring, and we moved from Spring to Block, and then on Up Block, so I can honestly say I've been in that same work area for quite some time. We have, and I love, everyone that I work with loves it, we don't want to go anywhere else. It's really true to the type of people that I work with. It really stands to reflect the personalities that we have in our salon. We like the type of people that come into our salon because it's on Block Street. We appreciate that. We have roughly 100 people a day that come in and out of there, and I think a lot of people probably don't understand how many people come in and out of the salon. And then we also have another business that's attached to us that does facial. She's an esthetician, and so that adds even more to that. But the main thing that I want to try to make everyone in here understand is, what would you do if this was your business? We constantly, it's been four years, and every single day, it's still a very big topic of conversation. And it's very educated people. It's not just elderly or, you know, we have a lot of mothers who have SUVs, who have three kids, and they're busy, and they don't have time to park three times to, you know, to try to get in there. And there is so much, as they just spoke of, the embarrassment and the anxiety that they walk in with is just, I mean, I know personally, I've lost many clients to Rogers and Bentonville because, that come down here, that don't just come down here to get their hair done, but they want to stay and play on Block, and they want to go have lunch at Hugo's, and they want to do everything, but they're done. Because, I mean, if you pay somebody $150 to get your hair done, and then you walk out there and there's a $15 ticket on your, hopefully 15, if you're on the line, it could be more, or people who don't understand and just park the wrong way. And we try so hard to catch them. We've tried everything to try to be on top of it, but we can't all day long with that many people coming in and out. We really can't do, be on top of it all day long. And we've all tried to educate our clients, but it's been four years, and we've gotten nowhere. I mean, we're still having a lot of this exact same problems. I mean, we have a lot of new clientele. They come once or twice. And then, you know, we've even had people in our salon who, their clients have called them and said, "We love you. We love your shop. We love everything about it. Call me when you move." And that is a really hard thing to accept for a hairstylist when this is your business. This is how we pay our bills. It's how we pay our mortgage and our car payments and put our kids in, you know, daycares and things like that. To have people who are saying, "We're so sorry, but this causes me so much anxiety that we just can't, we can't be a patron there any longer." The other thing that I really wanted to try to, that we really wanted to try to talk about the handicap and the fire trucks being able to get through. We had an incident where we had a client who had a seizure in one of our salon's chairs, and they had the hardest time getting there. They had a really, really hard time getting into there because it's all, we can't tell people who have big vehicles that they can't park there. We can't say, "I'm sorry, if you have an SUV, you can't get your hair done at Shag's Lawn," or if you're a man and you have a F450 or whatever, extended cab, "I'm sorry, but there's no parking for you." And a lot of people are good to go down the street and take the, you know, the city parking, and I've recommended that to quite a few of my clients. And I have a lot of clients who will park on the road that St. Paul's on because it's parallel, and they'll park there and just walk through the parking lot. But that's, but we can't tell people that they have to do that. We just, and I know the fire truck and ambulance both had a really hard time getting there that morning. But, so the other point I want to make, it's been four years. We've tried everything in our power to make this work, and it's just not working. It's not. We've tried, like I said, education. We've got a great Good Samaritan program going on at this lawn because of the way the meters are set up, because you back in. It appears that the one that's the closest to you is not your meter. It's the one, when you open up your door, it's the one that's straight back from your door, but that doesn't appear to be the meter for you. Now, in the front-end parking, you know, on Up Block, when you pull up, your meter's right in front of you. There's no guessing about which one's yours. There's no problem with that whatsoever, but with ours, so we've asked a lot of our clients, "If you go to put your money in your meter and it already has money in it, please put it in the person next to you because there's a probably good chance that they just put theirs on the wrong one." And again, not just older people. I mean, we're talking about, I had a judge from Hot Springs that I had, I sat outside for 15 minutes explaining to her, "I'm so sorry. I know what it appears to be." This was on a Saturday during the farmer's market, and she just could not understand why all the other cars were in these slots and why she couldn't just pull into our parking, into our driveway and pull back in. And I said, "I know. I'm so sorry. I understand that you don't live here and you don't understand it, but that's just the way it is." And we finally got to just park her in the back because her son was getting married. She was very nervous and frustrated, and of course, we wanted to take care of her because she was our client. So I think that's the thing I just want everyone to try to remember, is please, if this was your business, what would you do if you had, for four years, a constant complaint every day? I mean, and every single person that comes in, which I'm talking about one a month that comes in and says, "Oh, it's not that bad. You know, I'm used to it now." I'm like, "That's wonderful." And if everybody felt that way, we would, there'd be no problems whatsoever. We would be ecstatic. We wouldn't be any happier. But that's just not the case. After four years, it's still a constant conversation in our salon. And like I said, we don't want to move. We love it there. We love, I know y'all have been talking about the green spaces. That's the greenest area on Block. I mean, we have the most beautiful trees across the street from our salon. We have a wonderful patio that we encourage our clients to sit out on. We love it. We don't want to go anywhere just because of the parking. That would be the only reason that we would ever consider moving. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Camille, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
Do you ever hear anybody complain that the lines or the numbers in the parking spaces are faded?
Yes. Oh, my gosh. Just today, ironically, I had three different people that came in, and I'm sure this has kind of been a hot topic just recently with all the media and everything. But, yeah, there are no more, the letters that used to be on the front, and there used to be letters on the side. When you opened your door, there'd be an A, B, C, D. Those are gone. You can't, you cannot find them at all. So now, I've told my clients, you have to step out to the end and count back from your, is the best way to make sure that you know for sure that you're getting in your proper spot, that you're paying the right meter. And one of the green spaces that I understood y'all to say is, also has numerous other things, which is fantastic. I walked up to this salon one day, and one of my clients, I was walking down the street, she was in the middle of it. Because when you get in those spots properly and you open up your door, the curb's right there. She had to step out into it, so she was tra- sitting around the bushes to get back to her meter because of where the meters sit in conjunction to her car. That was the only way, was either, you know, was to step around to try to get back to her meter. And I thought, "Oh, a picture says a thousand words. If I had a camera right now, it would say so much."
Well, the reason I ask you that is because one of the reasons that I heard from city staff of why it was going to cost so much to replace it is because they had, they weren't, they didn't just paint the lines, that it was actually embedded in the pavement. And in order to change it, they were going to have to basically sand the pavement down. If that's wrong, Chris can tell me or somebody can tell me, but it troubles me that if we built it so well at the beginning, and that's one of the reasons it costs so much to change it, then those shouldn't be faded. So I don't know if we should try to get a refund or what, but it just troubles me that that was a reason.
Definitely. I looked actually today and could not find one spot that I could find.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure you'd heard that too.
Yes, no, definitely. Lots of people say, "How am I supposed to know which one?" And I said, "Oh, well, there's, every meter has a letter, and if you look in your spot," and they're like, "There's, it used to be that way maybe," but it, they're like, "They're not there anymore."
Thank you, Camille. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Jeremy, you want to address that?
This is just from Sharon Waters. The numbers are simply painted on with normal paint all throughout the downtown. The stripes are put on through a contract that we have. They're thermoplastics, so they're heated onto the pavement so that they stay longer. So there is definitely a difference in the type of application of that process.
Okay.
It's the same process we use at the university.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
Okay.
In a day.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes, please.
Thank you. I'm Laura Underwood, 2375 North Fox Trail, and 611 West Dixon Street is our business. Thank you very much, Mayor Jordan, and members of the council for allowing Thank you very much, Ms. Jordan, and members of the council for allowing us to come and visit with you at Block Street Parking. Um, I'm coming on behalf of being a cyclist. And, um, before I make my three points, I would like to thank the city very much for all the improvements you're making for cyclists in the community with the trails, the roads. It really is wonderful, and I thank you. Um, as a cyclist, though, I do have three concerns regarding that first area of Block Street Parking. And Nancy spoke to several of these, so I will just highlight them very quickly. The first one is lack of knowledge and experience for both the drivers of the cars and the cyclists. The second is lack of consistency, because once you go through that first block of Block Street, if you are clipped in on a bike, and you're expecting that all the way through, it does make a change. And the third is the lack of space. I asked some cyclists in the community, and one gave me this information, which I believe is very true. Block Street creates a narrow corridor and can only accommodate one vehicle and impedes multipurpose flow. You know, all three of these points create a dangerous situation for a cyclist, especially one that's only been cycling for three years. And I do believe you're promoting that as a street for cyclists. Um, and it does create a dangerous situation if you are clipped in and a car stops and starts backing up, and there's not room to go around. If you've ever been clipped into a bike, it does, you can't really back up very easily. Many times I've probably fallen over. So it does create a, a difficult and dangerous situation. I do believe that with all y'all are doing, y'all are trying your best to do the right thing for the citizens of Fayetteville, for cyclists, for families. But I do believe it's time to face the fact that this is not working. Um, and if it was working, we would see more of this type of parking in Fayetteville. Thank you.
Okay. Who else would like to address this?
I'm Richard Osborne. I live on Mount Sequoia, but I have an office at 26 East Center, about two blocks from here. About twenty people work in that building. I've also got some apartments in the 100th Block of West Meadow, about twenty people there too. The, one of the, probably fifty percent of the people coming to those two places come down Block. We're not directly affected because we don't have to park there. We're indirectly affected, however, by what Laura described. You pull up to back in, and the car behind you gets so close, and it's back in traffic up Block Avenue almost every day. They're waiting on somebody like Diane or me to back in and try to get in between the lines. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Who else would like to address this on this?
I'm Jim Hill with Beaver Electric at 208 North Block Street. And I appreciate y'all's time. Did y'all get the, uh, in your packet, the petition signatures? There's over five hundred of those, thank you. That are trying, that are suggesting changing it back to, uh, the, uh, pull-in parking. I'm, I'm, I'm going to skip a number of these things because they've been very well covered before me. One of the reasons for the parking, this type of parking, I understood, was the, um, safety factor of the way the doors open and loading the packages in. Um, there's no retail sales on that part of Block Street. There hasn't been, there still isn't. We don't have a Walmart or even a small grocery store, which would be good. In the ca, in the committee meeting, there had been a statement that there had been a big public response, um, positive for this project. At that time, as you know, it was to be all three blocks of Block Street. Uh, I came to all but one of the street committee meetings, uh, and the, uh, the public, first public meeting that showed the entire design. Uh, I missed one, uh, of the committee meetings, and there was not a big public response in positive. There was more negative. And that's obvious because the first block is the only one that got this. It saw the mistake, and they stopped on Blocks Two and Three. It didn't continue on. The parking meters that Councilman Tinnant was just asking about, on, on that block, there's two that are marked, all the meters are marked with letters, they must stick on a letter. But A and B spot are the only ones that still have their, uh, on the space, on the street. The rest of them are blank. You can't tell where something was there. They're not outlined in black or any of that. It was just a white A and a white B, are the only ones that still exist after this amount of time. And people do not know which, um, meter. We watch it, sit across, and I watch it every day from our office. People put it in the wrong one. We try to, if we have time, yell at them and tell them to put it in the other one, but then they end up getting a ticket, and that goes on. But, um, this was an experiment. I think this has been a failed experiment, and it's time that we correct it. I know there's a new project to make Block Street the connector between Dixon and Square. And I applaud you for this. And I think this would be a great way to start this project, to changing it back to pull-in parking instead of back-end parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Who else would like to address this on this?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman, and my Alderman, Mr. Tintin. My name is Larry Davenport. I live at 2632 North Charleston Crossing in Fayetteville. Not trying to one-up someone, but I've been here since 1955, so I've seen a lot of Fayetteville. I have no qualms of what the Transportation Division is trying their best to make a, you know, a good change and try and experiment with this, and I think they've worked hard at it. I also think we've had four years to evaluate this experiment. And I think at this point in time, I'd like the council to at least say, "We've heard this, members of this community, and they don't want it, for whatever reason, and you'll take that into your consideration." Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Who else?
My name's Tom Overbee. Live 1855 West Pratt in Fayetteville. My office is 211 North Block in the first block that we've been referring to. Um, first, I'll concede very readily that the meter identification problem is a real problem. I sit, as some of you know, fifteen, twenty feet from the street, watch it all day long. My window is directly facing all the parking areas. I can see about seventy-five percent of them from my window. And, uh, I think the biggest identification issue is the faded markings. The city recently upgraded the markings on many of the streets, Dixon, Spring, and so forth, repainted them this, within the last six weeks. It certainly makes it easier to see the numbers associated with those parking spots. The ones on Block have not been updated. I wonder if maybe they're waiting to see what's going to happen, but that needs to happen because the natural human tendency is to walk out and go to the meter to the right. I've spoken to the city transportation and Terry and others several times about this, and they're aware of it, they have several solutions, and that need does need to be done. Um, with respect to the resolution before you, I'm in favor of it. The number of parking spaces is my biggest issue. I've sent all of y'all today a little analysis of the developments on the first block. There are four vacant lots that are not developed. When those are developed, there's going to be more parking demand in the first block than there is currently. The hairdressing shop and the store next door has got over a hundred visitors a day, according to what the lady just said to you. Um, if you take out the parking spots you're going to lose if you redo, you're going to put stress on the need for more parking. They're going to be back to you, as are everyone in the first block, saying, "We don't have enough parking." As the development occurs, and there's more people coming to the first block, there's maybe enough parking now regardless of the format. But if you have all that development occur, which should occur in time, and you've taken away more parking spots, you're going to have a deficit, a bigger deficit. I don't think it's worth spending the money, personally, from what I see. And I've sent you all photos showing that the first block does fill up regularly, uh, all the way from Dixon to Spring with cars. People park in there. Some people have difficulty. Absolutely conceded, yes, some people do. There's a lot of people that don't. Appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Okay. Who else? Okay. Then I will bring it back to the council and close public comments. Okay. Who would like to be first?
Might start.
Okay.
Um, first, I want to applaud these businesses that came here today, and I, I want to thank all the people who signed these petitions. Uh, I'm going to read their names. No, I'm just kidding, I'm not going to read their names. But, um, you know, it's, it's really, really good when we see involvement. Whether we're on the same side or not, I think all of us up here like business and, and citizen involvement. It's, it's so important, and we get a lot of it here. And I had no doubt that we would get a lot of it here as well. Um, and to Ms. Biddle, um, you know, "I'm sorry you have to deal with the social media. We're pretty used to it up here, but you'll, you'll find intolerance is practiced fairly regularly on, uh, social media, so calling you a non-resident and the only one complaining and all of that is, uh, unfortunately, just something you have to deal with." So, I've been against this parking since it started, really. And, uh, uh, my big question has always been, "Why didn't the city do it anywhere else? If, if it was a good idea." Now, I think the intention was pretty good. I think the intention was, "Hey, there's, there's some other cool places that do this, and maybe we should try it." Um, but several things on this council, just in the time I've been there these last few years, we've done, and we've said at the end of it, "You know what? Let's try this, and if it doesn't work, or if we see it's not working, we'll, we'll go back and look at it again." And I usually feel pretty comfortable when I say that. I can tell you that I will be a little more uncomfortable moving forward when we say that because the first thing I'm going to start asking is, "Well, how much will this cost to change it if we ever need to?" And some of my council member, fellow councilmen up here might think that way. I promise you, I'll think that way, uh, moving forward. So, lesson learned there. Um, I spoke to a lot of the businesses up Block Street, not just the ones that are affected in, in this situation. And, um, pretty much most of them, I, I think, said, "We're really glad they stopped. We're really glad they didn't do it on up the road. Really glad they didn't do it anywhere else." Feel for those businesses down there, but, you know, it didn't, it didn't happen to us. And that's too bad for the businesses that it did happen to. Uh, and I've had a few people say, "Well, people just need to get used to it." My question is always then, "How are they expected to get used to it? Where else in town are they going to be able to get used to it? Um, I don't know of any place in East Fayetteville, I don't know of any place in West Fayetteville. I don't know anywhere else, pretty much, that we have this. So, how are they supposed to just get used to it? Just get better at it. People just need to learn to drive." Well, okay. But I have a hard time telling five hundred citizens, "You just need to get used to it." And I, I have a real problem saying that we can't, we can't do this because it costs this much money. I think at some point, we need to say, "This was a bad idea." It, it might work at some point in the future, but it's not working now. And we've got too many people that say so. Um, I'm going to vote to change this. And where will we find the money? I, I, I don't know for sure. But I'm going to vote to change it. Uh, but if I get outvoted, I can promise each and every one of you that, uh, as an Alderman, when we go into the next budget session, and sitting on the Transportation Committee, I will, the next, at the next chance I get, I will make this a priority to put it in the next budget. I don't know if it will come to that, but it will always be in the back of my mind because I've seen enough support to know it's a good idea to change it. So I don't know if I'll get outvoted tonight. But if I do, it won't be the last thing that happens on this. I can assure each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
I guess I'll be the first one probably that will have to vote on this. And I, uh, came in this evening with a pretty open mind. Um, people that know me know that I can be somewhat fiscally conservative. And the arguments we've heard this evening are certainly emotional. Uh, they certainly do show the impact that this has had on individuals, on businesses. And I will not lose sight of these arguments as we move forward. However, at this time, my biggest concern is I haven't heard a compelling story on why we have the urgency. And we do have in place a budget that's already been approved with projects. We already are running a deficit in some other project areas. And so we're going to have to look seriously at how to resolve something that is evidently a problem. And I see that it is evidently a problem. So, this evening, I would not be able to, um, I'm going to support the resolution as it's written with the understanding of those that have brought concerns forward. So you know where I'm coming from, that yes, I do see that your points are, uh, directly impacting your businesses and directly impacting the way that you feel about the parking situation. And as we move forward, we seriously must correct the situation. But in the short run, I don't know where we can get the money to do it. And so, this evening, I will be supporting the resolution, which indeed, sounds like I'm supporting back-end parking, but that's not the case. I'm supporting the fact that we would have to, uh, impact other projects on the end of a very rough winter. Do you have the potholes like I have in my neighborhood? Do you have the drainage problems like I have in my neighborhood and throughout Ward Two? Because we have some infrastructure issues that we're having to deal with in the short run. And so, we're going to have to, and then also, we've had this little, uh, bump in our sales tax and come again due to the weather, and I'm sure that we will recover. Uh, so, in the short run, I would not be able to say it would be fiscally responsible for me to take funds from another project at this time and do this with immediacy. But in the long run, I will not lose sight of the arguments that have been presented this evening. Thanks.
Yeah. I just have a question. Would it be all right if I asked Chief Dayringer a question?
Sure.
Chief, are you still back?
He stepped out, he's on the phone.
Okay. Well, I, okay. I can wait.
We're just ordering dinner.
Chief Dayringer?
Chief, you can have the microphone.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Okay.
But someone mentioned, um, during the public comment section that emergency vehicles have trouble getting in and out of Block Street businesses. Have you seen that as a problem?
Block Street's always been too narrow, okay? But we can get up and down the street. When it was built, when it was designed, we took the ladder track down there. We made sure there was a place for it in the multi-story buildings. Uh, we made sure that it could get around the curbs and the corners. When there's cars on both sides of the tree, street, yes, it's tight to get through there, but, but we will get through it.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Anybody?
Well, you, I'll just add, I, I came in tonight with a pretty open mind too. I, I really had no which, no idea how I was going to vote. At first, I was completely for changing it, and then I decided that maybe I should listen more to public input. And I just looked through here, and I've seen so many names from Ward Four, people that really want this changed. And, um, you know, when it went in, I thought it was a terrible idea too. I hated it. I just have to be upfront about that. But, um, I'm not going to vote to support the resolution tonight either. I, I think the resolution will pass, and, um... I think the resolution will pass, and I'll be fine with that. But I'm with Justin on this. I think it's something we need to come back to in the future, if it stays the way it is.
Snare?
Well, I'm going to support the resolution, because I think we have a wide variety of parking opportunities downtown, within one block. You can parallel park, you can pull-in park. And earlier today, I attended the Arkansas Downtown Network workshop on economic development along Main Street. And one of the things that they encouraged was, well, they wanted to encourage people to shop a district and not just go to an anchor store like a salon. And what happens is, maybe when people are uncomfortable backing into the parking space in front of the salon, maybe they park further up Block Street. And when they come out with their hair all done and feeling fabulous, they're lured into Little Bread Company for a warm beverage. And then they walk by Good Things Boutique and Dark Star Visuals and are enticed to shop there. Maybe they run into a friend and are lured into Maxine's for happy hour. And it's the idea that you don't come downtown just to go to one place, but you come downtown to shop the entire district. And I think by having diverse types of parking opportunities scattered throughout, it entices people to not just go to one place and leave downtown, but actually to stay and experience downtown and spend money. You know, I haven't had trouble backing in into those parking spaces, and clearly, a lot of other people don't either, because they seem to be occupied on a regular basis. So, I just don't see the need to spend $25,000 to $40,000 to tweak a parking issue when we have so many other transportation needs in this city. You know, I look at what the Block Street business owners are complaining about and come down to the south side on South School and look at some of the transportation issues that we have down there, and that might give you a little perspective. And, you know, we can't just invest everything in Block Street. We have the rest of our city's needs that we have to balance. And so, I'm going to support the resolution in favor of keeping the existing parking.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. When I went into this thing about four years ago, I wasn't a real big fan of back-end parking. But staff came in, Chris and Jeremy, and they began to show me the advantage of back-end parking, and that it was first that we were trying to develop a street that was along the new urbanism design. And we had had, prior to that, I cannot tell you the amount of people that used to call and talk about speeding up Block Street, needed to slow the traffic down, needed to put some sort of traffic calming measures in there. And we did. That we wanted to make it more pedestrian-friendly, so we put the wider sidewalks in. But the main thing that sold me on this was the safety aspect of it. They said when people back into a parking space, and by the way, I worked at the university 27 years and backed in every day, every day. But not everybody is skilled at that as other folks. I'm much better at backing in than parallel parking. But I backed in every day. And the reason I did that is when I got in that vehicle to leave, I could see where I was going. And what they said was, when you back in, that you unload your family from the rear, you load them from the rear, and when you leave that area, you can see where you're going. And I said, "Well, okay." Now, why we didn't go the other two blocks, I can't remember. Chris or Jeremy, do you remember why we didn't do the other two blocks? Was that part of the option? Chris, would you address that? There was some reason why we didn't do the other two blocks, other than...
The original concept was back-end parking on the block that it's installed on and also the block nearest to the square. The middle, where the Little Bread Company was always pull-in, because it was on the other side of the road. So, that was the concept that was ultimately approved. After the back-end parking, that was the first segment that was done between Dixon and Spring. After that was put in, the Transportation Committee at the time revisited the design and during construction, changed the very southern end nearest the square. So, it was originally designed to have two of the three blocks. One of them was removed during the project, just because of the newness of the back-end parking and all of the questions about it.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. There was probably, there was, I don't know, Matthew, you were on that committee, three or four months, three months of discussion on...
We had half a dozen meetings, counting the special public meetings.
So, it was discussed at length. So, we put it in, and it goes four years, and I ran into Nancy on the square. She was very, it was a very cordial meeting, and I told her I would look into it. So, I decided to study the accident reports. And is Chief Reynolds here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You may have to help me out with some of this. So, I spent several hours studying just the accident reports from the Federal Police Now, from Spring Street to Dixon, what I have is a total of seven accidents.
That's correct.
And one of those was the one we had last week, where the gentleman, for whatever reason, was traveling at a relatively fast pace when he hit that meter. In fact, he climbed up the stairs and up the embankment. So, he was moving along pretty quick. So, that was one accident. As far as car-to-car accidents where back-end parking is, how many have we had?
In that Block One section that we're talking about, on the back-end parking, we've had zero.
No accidents on car-to-car. Now, the area from Meadow, and I went ahead and, I didn't include the square or not, but from Meadow to Center, we've had a total of about, I totaled up, 14 accidents. And all of those, what do you have, 13 or 14?
Well, Mayor, I have more than that. From 2010 to present, we've had 26 accidents that have occurred in that area.
Okay. But I'm talking about just backing out and hitting a car. What I came up with was about 17.
Seventeen's correct, sir.
Seventeen of people backing out into cars, correct?
That's correct.
So, what I'm seeing is that the pull-in parking, that everybody considers safer, has created 17 accidents with people backing out into traffic. And why? Because they can't see where they're going. I know the arguments have been the other way, but these are the numbers and these are the facts. And I was a little stunned at that. I redid those figures a couple, three times, went through every accident report, looked at the diagrams. I had Chief Reynolds just a day or two ago to run through those numbers again to make sure I was correct, but I came up with about, car-to-car, about 17. Now, the big thing for me has always been the safety issue. Now, those are the numbers. If you think that it's safer to pull in to park, the numbers are just not showing it. And those are just the numbers. Also, I also parked at Hannah's Little Bread Company. I wanted to see how long it would take me to walk from there down to the hairdresser plushex. It took me about a minute. I walked from where Hugh goes is down to the same area, and it took me about three And those are the numbers. When I came to the conclusion of that, I thought, my goodness, not only does, I really thought that it could go either way when I started running the numbers. The numbers don't pan out, folks. The back-end parking, just from the numbers, proves that it's safer than the pull-in parking. That's just the numbers. So, accordingly so, and you can look at these, I have the list and the dates. With that, I will support the staff in continuing with the back-end parking.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yep.
Does the staff, based on these safety requirements, support maybe changing all the parking to back-end parking throughout the city? If it's such an obvious safety difference?
Well, Jeremy was talking about that the other day. The reason that we haven't done other back-end parking is...
Honestly, since 2010, the only other downtown project we've done is Center Street. That section, we looked at different options, but it wasn't really an option for that street. So, we really haven't done any other projects that would allow for that to be utilized. We've actually talked about other projects.
Yes, we have.
Where we're constructing streets. We've had private developers ask the very same thing. Can they do, can they do the private, on public streets, provide back-end angle parking? We haven't seen any constructed yet, but we've had inquiries. And I think part of that's because we've seen other cities moving to that as well. The middle block, no. I don't think we would recommend that. It doesn't work on the opposite side of the street, because then you're looking through your car, and so the line of sight is not nearly as good. And changing it to the west side of the street removes parking. That was one of the options that we looked at, but there were so many driveways on that west side that we didn't feel like it was beneficial to add the parking. If you looked at that memo, I think we increased the parking there to like 13 spaces from zero originally, and so we felt that was important.
So, based on that, it would be, we may see a project down the line that, where we're evaluating back-end parking for that particular project?
Sure. I think it's all going to depend on the width of the street, what you have available, and I'm sure we'll have this discussion again, whether that's a, whether that's a street that we're doing internally as Transportation Department, or if that's a private development that's constructed.
Okay. Well, based on these numbers of names, that'll be an exciting conversation when we have it.
Yes, it will.
So, I look forward to the city making that decision. Thank you.
We'll probably bring you one. Okay. What other comments do we have?
Mayor, I'd just like to say that we had an idea a couple, three years ago, maybe two years ago, maybe less than that, to do some changes up on the square for some restaurants, have some outdoor seating and all. And I was very supportive of that and loved the idea. On the Transportation Committee, I heard the ideas and saw the drawings. And the biggest problem that we encountered, and I've looked through, we got these names tonight, so I haven't carefully studied them. I don't see any of the names on here supporting this, of the people who came to the meeting and said, "Please don't take away any of our parking. We can't do without the parking spaces." And these were, so we did not do the change that would allow some outdoor seating that would have benefited some businesses there. And instead, we said, "Let's save the parking spaces for these businesses." Some of them, I thought, probably had very few people coming and going, but we erred on the side of protecting what was in place and protecting the number of parking spaces instead of maybe supporting the businesses that were sort of begging us to provide them with a way to make more money. So, for me, I'm going to support the resolution, because I do believe that the parking spaces are important. I like to walk and ride my bicycle. I don't drive my car very much. I haven't backed in on Block Street very often. When I have a, I'm just as bad at that as I am at parallel. It's not a pretty sight, and people honk at me. But I still think that we have to reserve, we need to preserve the parking spaces, and I think it's an important consideration, and so I'm going to support the resolution.
Yes, Matthew?
I might have the pleasure of being the only one in the room who had already voted against this four years ago. I was on the, was then the Street Committee, I was on the Transportation Committee back then, and I was opposed to the design that got built. I was the only one. I had alternative designs drawn up. The reason we had so many meetings is because I insisted, "We have all those meetings so that we could talk about this alternative proposal I had." And it failed. I was the only one to vote the way I voted. And I didn't vote against it because I had back-end parking, I'll tell you that. I voted against it because, for other reasons, it didn't have anything to do with parking. I love the Thomas Edison quote. You know, I was pretty new to the council whenever we had that discussion, and whenever it didn't go my way at the Street Committee, I gave up, and I shouldn't have, so I brought it to the council. So, that's on me. But, you know, the reason I'm bringing this up, and the reason I'm bringing this up and not talking about parking, is because back then, I tried so hard to get people on that street, people who did business on that street or who came to buy business on that street, tried so hard to get them to come to our meetings. And I couldn't get hardly anybody to come. There were a few people that came that were very active, and some of those people are here tonight. But by and large, the folks on the street didn't participate in that discussion. Can't let that happen again. Next time there's a project, you got to be there. Thanks.
Any other final comments from the council? All right.
We need a motion then.
Okay.
So moved. Passed the resolution.
Second. Motion second, pass the resolution.
Just to be clear, a yes vote is to keep it the same?
As it is.
Is to reaffirm the back-end parking design on Block Avenue.
So, a no would be to change it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hattie?
Yes.
Tinnett?
No.
Schopmar?
No.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
No.
Marsh?
Yes.
I count four votes. It takes five affirmative votes to pass the resolution, so Mayor, do you care to vote?
I will vote for it.
So, it has passed.
Okay. All right, under new business.
Mr. Mayor? Yes? I'm sorry to ask this, but because we moved that on the agenda, there are a lot of people here that came to speak for the firefighters' resolution that can't stay for another hour. Would the council be okay with moving that on the agenda, too? I hate that. There's a lot of here to speak for it.
Well, I mean, if you all want to move it up, I'm okay with that.
I'm fine. Make a motion. I'll make that motion.
I'll back it.
All right. We have a motion, second, to move the City Council's support for firefighters up to number two. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Hattie?
Yes.
Tinnett?
Yes.
Schopmar?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Okay. All right, number two. City Council's support for firefighters, a resolution to express the City Council's support of legislative enactment to create a presumption that firefighters who develop certain forms of cancer develop those cancers through their work as firefighters. Alan, I believe you're the, you and I are the sponsors of this.
Yes.
Would you like to start?
Sure, sure. And I appreciate the mayor sponsoring this with me. This is a resolution to support Representative Greg Letting's legislation at the state level to deem a presumptive illness in the line of duty for firefighters in the state of Arkansas. So, what does that mean? I'm just going to give you just a little bit of background on that. Firefighters are exposed to carcinogens in two places mainly. One is through the actual air they breathe and fires they're fighting, chemical fumes, excessive heat, things they touch in those situations. The other area is in unventilated firefighter houses in the state of Arkansas. Fire engines have diesel fuel, and that fuel exhaust has to go somewhere. The video we're going to watch in just a second, and you can find many others online, will show you the black sit that accumulates on bedding and clothing in firehouses. Now, we know where those exhaust fumes go, exhaust fumes go. They go into the living quarters and offices of the firehouses, where they are inhaled by the firefighters, or they accumulate on surfaces that the firefighters touch. Here in Fayetteville, we have a great active ventilation system that carries those exhaust fumes out of the building and away from our firefighters. But in many cities, they do not. Springdale was one of those cities with unventilated firehouses until not too long ago. So, what does that mean, and why are we talking about this? If we could play the video at this point?
There's a lot of attention to line-of-duty deaths, you know? Firefighters who die in a burning building, in a collapse. The funerals are on television, and the truth is, is the numbers of us dying with our boots off is far greater.
The numbers of firefighters dying, in particular, from...
Cancer.
Miami-Dade Fire Captain and cancer survivor, Bob Carpenter, says he sees it day after day.
We've been together 19 years, and we're thinking, wow, you know, we're over the hurdle. You know, we're over the hurdle, and then this wham, right in our face.
Tears flow and words fall with painful reflections and...
Four of us were diagnosed...
Four of us were diagnosed the week I was diagnosed with mine.
The diagnosis, cancer, for forty-five-year-old Miami-Dade firefighter Leslie Carter. It's a thyroid.
Three were thyroid, one was colon.
And now on the front line of a different life and death battle, Miami-Dade firefighters share their nightmare. Cancer, hunkling, firehouse after firehouse. Forty-two-year-old firefighter Paul Hor, a hero in the ranks, got the call from his doctor.
She goes, "You're at stage three, colon cancer. It's in your lymph nodes." And that just, I mean, just devastated me. I ate clean, I exercised, I don't smoke, you know, I'm active daily, so never in a million years did I think that's what's going to happen to me.
He's not alone. A retired Miami-Dade firefighter and head of the Firefighter Support Network for Florida, Keith Tyson knows the nightmare. He's lived it, diagnosed with prostate and skin cancers just months after retiring. Now his life is about documenting the cases, collecting and studying data and death certificates.
When we reached out to United Healthcare, which happened to be our provider, or is our provider at the time, the numbers that came back were staggering. And between the years of 2008, 2009, and 2010, out of approximately 2,000 members insured by United Healthcare, thirty-two percent of us had been already diagnosed with some form of cancer. And these are young members, for the most part.
It's chilling data emerging nationally. In one of the most comprehensive federal studies of its kind that tracked thirty thousand firefighters from San Francisco, Chicago, and Philadelphia, the findings are considered daunting, evidence of a relation between firefighting and cancer. The research speaks to the incidence of certain cancers, such as brain, lung, and colon, among otherwise very fit and healthy firefighters. Now the focus turns to the potential why the toxic soot firefighters are working in may be more toxic than ever.
The fires that we're fighting today are not the fires of forty years ago. Most of the products in our houses and our homes are made up of, you know, more than fifty percent of petroleum products. We know that petroleum products are just laced with carcinogens.
But it's not just exposure to chemicals in the field that may be of concern. The set up for firehouses, the bunk beds where the firefighters sleep are often right next to the vehicle bays where diesel fuel regularly fills the air.
The EPA has classified diesel soot as a Class I carcinogen.
Look at these photos of diesel stains on just one wall. Many states have taken action, passed laws, to help firefighters fail by cancers that are presumed to be linked to their jobs, related medical care costs covered by those states.
There's thirty-three states across the country right now that have a cancer presumption law. The state of Florida does not. Presumptive legislation that cancer diagnosis is job connected, you know, is what I see in the short term. And by short term, I know we're not talking days, but we shouldn't be talking decades either.
Because in this newest fight for those in the trenches of saving others, decades are not guaranteed for any.
Thank you all for watching that video. I know it's hard to watch. If one of our firefighters were to break his back during a fire and become disabled, that would be considered in the line of duty. If a firefighter were to be killed by a beam collapsing on them while attempting to save one of our lives, that would be considered in the line of duty. The firefighter's family would be taken care of in these cases. Their children would be able to go to a state college for free, and the family's benefits would be greater to help replace the income that that firefighter could no longer provide his family. However, if a firefighter developed certain forms of cancer after five or twenty-five years of fighting fires, cancers that are medically linked to job requirements of fighting fires and staying in unventilated firehouses, their illnesses in the state of Arkansas would not be deemed in the line of duty, and their family would not be taken care of. Approximately forty other states have passed legislation creating this presumption of illness linked to their on-the-job duties, but Arkansas still falls behind. In Arkansas, spouses of deceased firefighters are not even able to collect social security benefits. Their children have no college assistance. They do not receive the same benefits that they would have received if there was a physical injury, that there is a great injury to that firefighter. An injury developed from cancer from fighting fires or staying in an unventilated firehouse, an injury that built over years from their exposure to carcinogens while saving the lives, and it should be deemed in the line of duty. Bud Planchin, a friend, a captain at the Springdale Fire Department, a citizen of Fayetteville, and a dedicated public servant, who I have great respect for, fought this battle for five years. Bud and his wife Jane, who is in the audience with us, and his daughter Olivia is here as well, they fought this battle with the state of Arkansas and with cancer for five years while the state of Arkansas denied his claims and denied medical facts. Bud lost that fight with cancer on April 11th, just three and a half weeks ago. But his fight to protect who he would call his guys, or our local firefighters, is not over. In fact, I think seeing the turnout tonight, I think we can say that it's just begun. I think it's time for Arkansans to stand up and tell their legislators that they want those public servants who risked their lives to protect theirs, that Arkansas laws should be changed. I think it's time for our public to know the truth about the lack in care we offer to the survivors of our firefighters. Bud Planchin is not alone in this fight. There are hundreds of other firefighters across the state of Arkansas fighting this battle with cancer and the battle for line of duty benefits. And for them, we must stand up and send a message to our legislators demanding change. And I hope you'll do, help me by doing that tonight, by voting yes for this resolution. Greg Letting, who is in the room, is sponsoring a bill for this legislation. He's one of our great legislators, and I hope that you'll join me tonight in support of that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. What other comments, questions from the council do we have on this? Go ahead, Matthew.
Thank you, Alan and Mayor, for bringing this forward. Keep telling myself I won't be surprised when Arkansas hasn't done something that makes a lot of sense, but I guess this is just another one of those times. It does make a lot of sense, and I'd be honored to go down to Little Rock with the both of you in lobby for this whenever the time is, whenever the time comes.
Okey-dokey. All right. Yes, Sarah?
I know from working in the building industry how many toxins are in everyday building materials. Everything from flame retardants, volatile organic compounds that are in our paints and carpets, urea formaldehyde that glue a lot of our furniture together, endocrine disruptors like phthalates in a lot of the plastics, and then vinyl itself, which we're using in flooring and paints and vinyl siding, windows. It's actually, vinyl's just short for polyvinyl chloride, and when that burns, it releases chlorine and dioxin gases, which in large concentrations are used as chemical weapons. So I think it would be impossible for our firefighters' health to not be adversely affected by exposure to these toxins. And I'll join you in Little Rock. Thank you for bringing this forward.
Any other comments right now? All right. What public comment do we have on this? Yes, please. Point.
Dwayne Cromwell, 335 Baxter Lane, Fayetteville. All the long you've made most of my points, I'll be brief. I will remind everybody that the video you just saw pointed out that more firemen die after they retire, or have to retire, from cancer than from being killed on the job while fighting a fire. Arkansas is one of a paltry ten states that do not make it easy to receive benefits for cancer from working in a diesel-fueled fire station for over twenty years like Bud Planchin I'm just going to say one more thing. Despite the five-year fight that the municipal league fought every part of the way to deny Bud his benefits, on September 20th this year, in Colorado Springs, Colorado, Jane and Olivia, along with the firemen, will be there to see Bud's name inscribed on the Hall of Honor wall as having died in the line of duty. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. Who else would like to address us on this?
Captain Mark Holloway, Springdale Fire Department, resident of 1039 Bonding Lane. I have fought fire with Bud. Bud died with no regrets. I can speak for my fellow firefighters that we understand the risk, but we understand that the obligation of government is to cover us when we suffer the harm that our job suffers us too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mayor, councilors, I want to thank you for your show of support. This is, you're on the right side of this issue, if I can give my opinion. And we appreciate your gesture, and we'll appreciate your lobbying efforts, because that's what it's going to take. You know, I have to say this, in his second inaugural address, Abraham Lincoln said that he was referring to binding up the wounds of the nation after the Civil War. And he said that the nation shall care for him who has borne the battle, and his widows and his orphans. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody else?
Hello, I'm Jimmy Vineyard, Representative Fayetteville Firefighter Association. I'd like to thank Mr. Letting, Alderman Long, Mayor Jordan for representing this and bringing it forward in the state. I think it's great to work for a city and a community that looks after its employees in a fashion, seeks the future in these things, and represents that. And I'd like for all of y'all's support for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jimmy.
My name is Scott Verity, and I'm here tonight as a private citizen. I live at 2357 Wynwood Drive in Fayetteville, privileged to live in Fayetteville. I was more privileged to know Bud Planchin. He was one of my college roommates, and we became lifelong friends. This issue is bigger than just Bud, and he would be the first one to tell you that. But he did lose his life in the line of duty, and he bravely withstood everything that was thrown at him as he was dying over a period of time. And I applaud you for taking this initiative and wholeheartedly support this. And let me tell you one quick story. One time I went to visit Bud at the fire station in Springdale. "Scott, you want some ice water?" "Yeah, I'd love some, Bud." So I went in the kitchen with him. He opened the freezer door to the refrigerator. It was white. The inside of the freezer was white. But then he pulled out the ice. It was covered in black soot. He started to wipe it off before he dropped it in my glass of water. And I said, "Bud, that's okay. I don't want any water." I think we have a collective responsibility to our firefighters and others who protect and defend our lives and our property, and that it would be wrong for us not to stand up for them when they stand up for us every time they go to work. So thank you for your support.
Thank you, Scott. Anyone else? Okay, I'll bring you back to the council. Once I pull it together here a moment, I will make some comments. First, it starts with my story. When I was a young man, I worked for a construction company. And we worked in a plant. And we were remodeling that plant. And they took Visqueen and put us in a room and Visqueened us off. And that was my first dose of cutting asbestos. It was so thick, you could not see the person in front of you. We put bandanas around our face where we could get some sort of protection. I was probably twenty-one years old, and many of the people, the workers in that particular room, has gotten asbestos poisoning. I have not. But I told myself that I would make sure that other workers did not have to go through something like this, as I found out about asbestos later on. Now, you know what I know about the firefighters? The alarm goes off. It could be two in the morning, middle of the afternoon. They don't know when it's going to go off. And they get in a flying piece of metal, and they go to a fire. And they put it out, and they go through those fumes, and then they come back. And you know why they do it? You know what they say? "I'm going to protect the citizens. I'm going to protect your property, and nobody's going to harm you, not on my shift. We're going to protect you." And you know, I think it's time that we protected them. I think it's high time that we protect them on our shift. My father used to say, "Always do the right thing because it's the right thing to do." This is the right thing to do. I don't care what the municipal league thinks. I think this is right, and I think it needs to be done, and I think it needs to be done now. And if we don't do it, I don't know who will. We don't do it now, I don't know when it's going to get done. This is the time to do it. And I've been on this fight for this and mental health benefits for how long? I don't know. Couple, three years. And we continue the fight. Now, I just want to encourage the council tonight to do the right thing and pass this resolution, because together, we can change this, and we can protect their lives and their families. And at the end of the day, that's what's most important. Thank you. What other comments do we have?
Do we pass the resolution?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass the resolution. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Hattie.
Yes.
Tannett.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Thank you, council, very much. My goodness, where were we? All right. Let's start with New Business. Well, I guess we've started with New Business. I'm going to start with number one, or number three, or wherever we are. All right, number one on, number three. Let me number these correctly for the record. Excuse me just a moment. All right, number three, on New Business. Loson Associates Incorporated Amendment Number One, Resolution to Approve Amendment Number One to the Agreement for Professional Landscape Architectural and Engineering Services with Loson Associates Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $726,022 for design and construction documentation of the regional park. Allison.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm Allison Jumper with the Parks Department. And last November, a contract with Loson Associates was approved to finalize the master plan for the regional park. That phase of the design is complete, and we're now requesting to move forward with the detailed design and construction documents for Phase One. That phase will include park infrastructure, including water, sewer, electrical utilities, as well as stormwater improvements and roadway design and improvements, as well as the park amenities, the ball fields, concession restroom, parking, pavilion, playgrounds, and trails. With the approval of this contract amendment, we do anticipate coming back later this fall with the construction contract, and we really hope to be breaking ground by the end of the year.
All right. What questions do we have for Allison on this? Okay. What public comment do we have on this? See, now I'll bring it back to the council.
I move we pass the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass the resolution. Any final comments from the council? Any final comments from the council? Sandra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Tannet.
Yes.
Shopmart.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
All right, number four, RZN 14-4659, west side of Beechwood and south of Domain Beechwood Properties. An ordinance resoning that property described in the zoning petition, RZN 14-4659, for approximately 9.74 acres located at the west side of Beechwood, south of Domain from I-1, heavy commercial light industrial to CS Community Services. Kit.
Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby changes the zone classification of the following striped property from I-1, heavy commercial light industrial to community services, as shown on Exhibits A and B attached or to made part hereof. In Section Two, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends the official zoning map of the City of Fayetteville to reflect the zoning change provided in Section One.
Okay. Jeremy.
Mayor, council, this property is located south of Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and west of Beechwood Avenue. It's currently the site of an existing under, large, underutilized parking lot. It's directly south also of University House, which is a student housing project that replaced an abandoned industrial property on this side of the city. The property is currently zoned I-1, which is also industrial, and that is requested to rezone it to community services, which is one of our form-based codes. The Planning Commission and staff is recommending approval of this rezoning. We feel that this area is seeing some change, particularly providing residential uses, which has not been present for many years. It will also provide more heads, more people, more density to allow the services along Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and other areas to survive and thrive. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this item, eight to zero, and staff is also supportive.
Okay, what questions do we have for Jeremy on this? Okay. What public comment do we have on this? Okay, now I'll bring it back to the council.
I move we pass the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Tannet.
Yes.
Shopmart.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Marsh.
An ordinance resoning that property described in the zoning petition, RZN 14-4659, for approximately nine and three quarters acres located from west side of Beechwood, south of the Domain, from heavy commercial light industrial to community services.
Any final comments from the council on this? Sandra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Tannet.
Yes.
Shopmart.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Okay, number five, Vacation 14-4655, southwest corner of Razorback, 15th Razorback Student Housing. An ordinance approving, approving Vacation 14-4655 submitted by Crafton Toll property located at southwest corner of Razorback, 15th Street to vacate a portion of a utility easement. Kit.
Whereas the City Council has the authority under ACA 14-54-104 to vacate public grounds or portions thereof which are not required for corporate purposes, and whereas the City Council has determined that the following described portion of the platted utility easements are not required for corporate purposes, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby vacates and abandons the following portion of utility easement described in Exhibit B attached or to made a part hereof. In Section Two, that a copy of this ordinance duly certified by the city clerk, along with the map attached and labeled Exhibit A, shall be filed in the office of the county and recorded in deed records of the county in Section Three, that this vacation approval is subject to the following conditions of approval and shall not be in effect until the conditions are met. Number one, a water line shall be installed from the east side of Razorback Road at Travel West and stop out at University Square. And number two, any damage or relocation of existing facilities shall be at the owner and developer's expense.
Jeremy.
It's a request for an easement vacation of a general utility easement. The property is located at the southwest corner of Razorback Road and 15th Street in southwest Fayetteville. Currently contains about four and a half acres, and there's a planned development on the site. The existing easement conflicts with the proposed development plan. This is a form-based zone, and so the building's being pushed closer to the street, so the request is to vacate that easement. Utilities would be located interior to the property, and that's what the conditions of approval reflect. Staff and the Planning Commission recommend approval of this item as well.
Okay. What questions do we have for Jeremy on this?
Jeremy, I have a question related more to the development rather than the utility easement vacation, but with this new development going in, will there be any infrastructure improvements required to that intersection or the sidewalks along there?
Yes, there will likely be new sidewalks on both Razorback and on 15th Street along that area, hopefully connecting all the way to the trail. It's a little bit off-site, but we're working with them to try to connect to the trail in that location, and then connect also up to the sidewalks that are along the University Square development, so it'll complete that entire section.
What about to cross the street, across 15th Street? That's a pretty dangerous intersection.
We mentioned that as part of the, I think, agenda session question. I think we'll likely look at that as a larger intersection improvement for all four corners, and we could be on probably the scope of this particular project, that a larger transportation improvement that the city would be making. We do have improvement dollars that were submitted by the developers of these properties several years ago as part of a bill of assurance to signalize that intersection. As mentioned in the agenda session, we're not sure that signalization is the best. It could be a roundabout or other improvements that could be made, and that's something we're, it's on our list of things that we're looking at currently.
I would just like us to keep in mind that we're building a large development for student housing, and you can't safely cross the street to the university there. So, we really need to prioritize some improvements there.
I certainly would agree, Councilmember Marsh, since I live right in that area. I do walk sidewalk on Razorback and around sometime by Beechwood. Some places you don't even have a sidewalk. But it is, I would feel so much safer if I was walking down Razorback where I did, where I would not be so close, like cleaning the mirror of a large truck as it goes by. But that's about how close it is on Razorback. It is really narrow, and those improvements on Beechwood, and I get a lot of calls about that intersection, and I can say there's several accidents in that intersection. Those improvements were certainly needed on that area of town. What other comments do we have?
Duly noted, thank you.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this? Okay.
Move suspend the rules and go to the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Tannet.
Yes.
Shopmart.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
An ordinance approving VAC 14-4655 submitted by Crafton Toll for property located at the southwest corner of Razorback and 15th Street to vacate a portion of a utility easement.
Rhonda, are you having a moment, or what are you thinking?
What happens if we don't vacate this utility easement, Jeremy? Forgive me for stepping out for a moment. You may have answered that.
No, essentially, the building would have to be pushed back off the street a bit. This is a form-based code, and so we require the building to be within a build-two zone. The existing utility easement, which there are no utilities within it, and there are no plans to put utilities, utilities within that utility easement, prevents that from occurring right now. So, their development plans place the utilities interior to the property, and the conditions of approval reflect that. So, it could certainly alter the development, development plans as part of this project. I will say, the Planning Commission also made recommendations and requirements as conditions of approval for this to occur, because they're trying to pull the development away from the creek. There's a creek on the backside of this development, and the streamside protection area affects this property, so they tried to pull as close to the street and away from that streamside protection area as possible, and that's one of the reasons we were looking at this as an option.
That's helpful. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay.
I just want to mention that taking it out to the street for the very reason you said, is pushing it right into where we're walking, and then it seems very crowded there. And I know that there's a feeling that pushing things to the street makes it more pedestrian-friendly, but that's not been my experience. And so, looking at this and looking the way that it was planned and watching the Planning Commission review this, I'm glad you brought it up, because again, people know I don't like to vacate things. I don't like to give it up. But the, in order to protect that stream, I think that it is going to be rather delicate over there, because we have so much velocity as it approaches that property that we do have to protect it, and we already have problems in that area. So, that's why I think that this is probably important in this specific plan and design.
And because I can tell you that Razorback sidewalk is right on the road, and when those trucks go by you, you can, you can feel it. I mean, because they're, they're motoring by the time they get through that.
I mean, the other, sorry, I guess if we don't vacate it, then they can't build this big, maybe. I mean, it doesn't mean...
Well, you should also know this was an extremely difficult project to, to get finished on this particular site.
Yeah. Boy, that's, there's quite a history to that piece of property.
It took a lot of work, and I really want to thank Jeremy for all of his work on this in order to get, make this project a reality and stay out of the creek as far as we were able to do.
We value that, for sure. I agree.
If there's nothing in the, the easement, there's hardly any reason for us to maintain it. So, that's, I think, why it's been suggested that it be vacated, because there's nothing to protect within the easement that was granted when it was thought there might be some need for it, but it's been shown that with the conditions of approval that we have, that we will, the city will not need this easement. I think, is that right, Jeremy?
That's correct.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say, this is a really good site to be putting student housing on. It's very close to the university. It's served by transit. There are several restaurants and shops within walking distance, so, and it will be on our trail system, so I think this is a, this is a good place to be putting some density, and I'm glad that they were able to back off the street. Or, I'm sorry, back off the street.
We're on the third reading, or on the second reading.
Do we go to the third reading?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Tannet.
Yes.
Shopmart.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
An ordinance approving VAC 14-4655 submitted by Crafton Toll, property located at the southwest corner of Razorback and 15th Street to vacate a portion of the utility easement.
Any final comments from the council?
I have a final comment. We, this does have a history on this property, as a lot of us know, and it is my hope that we're going to improve the intersection, improve the walkability. I hope the, the density will indeed improve the opportunity for the business growth in this area of town, as well as connecting to the trail, to bring more activity to the south side between Sixth Street and Martin Luther King and 15th. Otherwise, I probably would not support it the way it is, but I've tried to balance it out, and I think in, in the balance of things, I've tried so hard to get this developed in the past, and this seems to be, and I've been fooled in the past. Once it gets built, I'm always a little, I'm sometimes surprised, but I think that this is going to work on this property, and I, again, I appreciate the staff and also the Planning Commission that's worked with this and had open discussion for quite some time. So, of course, I'll support it.
I will say, just in response, that development did, fortunately or unfortunately, however you want to look at that, had to decrease their unit count by quite a bit just to make the project fit. They reduced, I think, a story or two from the original plans, 50 units, I think, so it, it reduced quite a bit just to make the project fit the site, which we supported. It does need to fit the property and meet the parking demand that's down there, because there's really no other play, there aren't shared spaces to park in a lot of ways there, except on the university property, which they don't necessarily support all the time. And so, it's something we, we felt like they worked as, in as much as possible to, to get that project to work.
I'd just like to say, thank you very much, and I'm sorry to kind of keep us here longer, but I really want us, as a council, to be so thoughtful and careful on these student housing projects, and to be thinking about, and the points that you made, Mark, just now, very good, the streamside, very good, but let's just, I suppose, to slow down. If we have a question or anything that enters our mind, I want us to all stop and ask it, even if it maybe isn't, you know, the brightest question in the book, like mine usually aren't. But I, these student housing projects, we're all hearing about it. I know all of us are on our emails, and we really need to, and I know you're doing it, Jeremy. Thank you for your great work in your, in your office.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. If there's no other final comments, Sandra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Tannet.
Yes.
Shopmart.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Okay, number six, Vacation 14-4656, 2693 Valencia Avenue, Riverwood Homes. An ordinance approving Vacation 14-4656 submitted by Riverwood Homes, property located at 2693 Valencia Avenue to vacate a portion of a utility easement and drainage easement in total of approximately 42 square feet. Kit.
Whereas the City Council has the authority under ACA 14-54-104 to vacate public grounds or portions thereof which are not required for corporate purposes, and whereas the City Council has determined that the following described portion of the platted utility easements are not required for corporate purposes, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby vacates and abandons the following portion of utility easements described in Exhibit B attached or to made a part hereof. In Section Two, that a copy of this ordinance duly certified by the city clerk, along with the map attached and labeled Exhibit A, shall be filed in the office of the county and recorded in deed records of the county.
Okay, Jeremy.
It's a request to vacate a very small easement, about eight by five area on Valencia Avenue. It's on a lot there, part of a general utility easement and drainage easement on the northeast property line. This is a, a lot within a corner, and so it has an odd type shape. The request is to vacate a portion of that easement to allow the construction of a home to be more feasible. All city utility departments and franchise utilities consented to the object, consented to the vacation with no objections, and staff and the Planning Commission voted nine to zero to support this request.
Okay, what questions do we have for Jeremy on this? Okay. What public comment do we have on this? Okay.
Motion to suspend the rules and go to the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Tannet.
Yes.
Shopmart.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
An ordinance approving VAC 14-4656 submitted by Riverwood Homes, property located at 2693 Valencia Avenue to vacate a portion of a utility easement in total of approximately 42 square feet.
Any final comments from the council? All right. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Tannet.
Yes.
Shopmart.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Okay, number seven, IPZD 14-4662, Industrial Plan Zoning District 701 West North. An ordinance establishing an industrial plan zoning district titled IPZD 14-4662, Project Corral, located at 701 West North Street, containing approximately .76 acres, admitting the official zoning map of the City of Fayetteville and adopting zoning criteria and associated master development plan. Kit.
Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby changes the zone classification of the following striped property from community services to IPZD 14-4662, as shown in Exhibit A and B attached or to made a part hereof. Section Two, that the change in zoning classification is based upon the approved zoning criteria and associated master plan and statement as submitted, determined appropriate and approved by the City Council. Section Three, that this ordinance shall take effect and be in full force at such time as all requirements of the zoning criteria and master plan have been met. And Section Four, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby And Section Four, that the city council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends the official zoning map of the City of Fayetteville to reflect the zoning change provided in Section One above.
Jeremy?
I think amended, mention of agenda session, this may win the award for the smallest plans I've ever seen.
I was just thinking.
This is about three quarters of an acre, located on North Street, near our trail crossing at North Street. Um, the property is currently zoned, community services. You all just rezoned the property, community services, uh, a few weeks ago. Um, this encompasses a portion of that property. The proposed use on the site, uh, is for a tap room and brewery, um, for, um, beer production. The, um, a business with a primary use being beer production and distribution, um, greater than fifty percent of the size of the structure is considered a manufacturing use, which technically is not allowed within our community services district. Um, therefore, the, because it's a manufacturing use, normally only industrial districts would be, uh, I two, manufacturing would be, uh, the only zoning district that would allow that. Um, we do, would not feel comfortable rezoning this property to I two amongst, um, other residential and commercial uses, uh, and so we recommended this avenue. There's really not a lot of planned development, uh, on the site. Um, this is a zoning, uh, zoning proposal that really utilizes the existing structure. There's about a three thousand square foot building, about two thousand square feet of that would be for the manufacturing of craft beers and about one thousand square feet of the building would be utilized as a tap room, um, and bar. Uh, IPZD is a customized zoning district, so what this applicant has done is essentially utilized all of the zoning, uh, uses that are allowed within community services, which are already there, and simply added this particular manufacturing use with the limitation that it's craft beers, microbrewery, uh, not to exceed five thousand barrels annually, along with the one thousand square feet of tap room. So, for the sake of the zoning criteria, it protects the city in the future. This can, uh, change over time, the uses can change over time with any of those uses allowed within community services, so we're protected there. It simply allows us, this use to, to be able to occupy the property. Um, there's not a lot of conversation about this at the planning commission, they supported unanimously and staff is also, uh, in favor of this planned zoning district.
Okay. What questions do we have for Jeremy on this? Al?
I have a question, it might be one of those not so smart questions, but I'm gonna a, ask it anyway. So, this is a microbrewery, so I'm guessing a lot of the waste will be beer. Um, maybe that didn't, but wasn't brewed correct, well, it may be something that wasn't brewed correctly. I mean, maybe there's people that would drink bad beer, I don't know. But, m, my concern is that it's next to the stream, that's a very large stream for Fayetteville, and I'm just wondering what would be done with that liquid waste.
Have to ask the applicant if they know what the, where the byproduct is.
Sorry, that's a question.
My name's Jason Correll, I live at, uh, fifteen fifty-three East Columbus Boulevard, which is Ward Three, I believe, um, and as far as this, I've talked with the wastewater treatment plan, um, I can't remember the official that I spoke with, but I told her about the scale that we were planning on working with, we considered the fact that maybe I might be brewing some bad batches of beer that have to go down the drain, um, that is where it would go, and she said with the scale that we're talking about, it shouldn't be an issue.
You said drain, that's what I wanted to hear.
So, it would be treated along with our other wastewater.
And this would be going over to the, uh, new west side plant.
Not in the stream.
Thank you.
And if it was a significant quantity, pre-treatment would be required.
Yes.
Doesn't sound like it's meeting that.
I think that's a good question, though, as we look at, uh, changes and, and going into an industrial production.
Sounds like a new way to earn volunteer community as a year.
What other questions do we have? Where are we? Okay. Public comment. Do we have any public comment on this? Okay. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council.
Will we go to the second reading?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tenny?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
An ordinance establishing an industrial plan zoning district entitled IPZD fourteen dash forty-six sixty-two, Project Corral, located at seven oh one West North Street, containing approximately three quarters of an acre, amending the official zoning map of the City of Fayetteville and adopting the zoning criteria and associated master plan.
Motion to suspend the rules and go to third and final reading?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tenny?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Sorry. Sorry. Number eight, Environmental Consulting Operations Incorporated. An ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving agreement with Environmental Consulting Operations Incorporated for wetlands mitigation site monitoring and management for two thousand and fourteen in the amount of thirty-three thousand dollars. Kit.
Whereas the Environmental Consulting Operations Inc., ECO, developed the wetlands and stormwater protection best management plans and conducted excellent construction inspection for the wastewater system improvement project, and whereas under the supervision of ECO, contractors working for the city completed over one hundred and thirty-five million dollars in work without a single permit violation, and whereas ECO also designed the wetlands mitigation site that was required by the Corps of Engineers. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the city council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the city council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby finds that such circumstances constitute an exceptional situation where competitive bidding is deemed not feasible or practical, and therefore weighs requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement with Environmental Consulting Operations Incorporated for wetlands mitigation site monitoring and management for two thousand and fourteen in the amount of thirty-three thousand dollars.
Mayor, um, as the council's aware, the city has, um, contracted with ECO Inc., um, to provide wetlands and stormwater protection best management practice plans and, um, construction inspection during our WSIP project. In two thousand and thirteen, um, December thirty-first, the contract for services ended and was not, um, extended at that time and we've had a gap in contracted services since that period, um, which was exacerbated when, uh, David Jurgens left the city, so the project sat kind of in limbo waiting for renewal. Um, as I've taken on that interim role and the search for, uh, utilities director, uh, we've worked with Bruce Shackelford and his company, um, to provide us a, uh, contract for renewing these services, uh, for two thousand and fourteen, minus the burn in items which were conducted with CH two M Hill earlier this year. Um, our plan is, uh, to contract for annual ecological restoration monitoring of our existing mitigation site, and to have an annual adaptive management strategy for our existing mitigation site, to develop a tracking, uh, credit tracking ledger for our surplus wetland credits, which are limited for city usage on city infrastructure projects, excuse me, and to provide environmental regulatory and technical information assistance to the City of Fayetteville and any of the City of Fayetteville, city contractors for city-related projects. Uh, our plan is in two thousand and fifteen to add the burn management component back and to bring a contract renewal for two thousand and fifteen that would incorporate not only these items, but, uh, those items that were previously done this year. This is within the, uh, water utility operations budget, so it doesn't require a budget adjustment. And this is separate, and I wanna be clear, because we've had some questions, um, we have two types of work activity that we plan to bring to the council, this being the first, maintenance and monitoring program, uh, the second is the resolution that the council passed for the expansion of wetlands, um, and the project plan for that. Uh, staff discussed this and decided to separate these into two separate contracts because, one, we wanna have the responsibility of maintaining our current mitigation site and not confuse those credits and those credits usage and the cost of maintenance and, and monitoring that site with any new site that the council may make a policy decision on in the future. Um, and you will see in the future, um, a potential contract plan coming forward to you for the new activities. Um, we'd originally asked Mr. Shackelford to provide those documents in the hopes that if we decide to move forward with him for some preliminary work in that, we can add in this contract in a very soon-to-be upcoming council meeting, but tonight we didn't wanna delay any further the renewal of this, uh, contract, so, and we believe that it's appropriate to, uh, suspend competitive bidding because of the longstanding track record, um, the knowledge and the, uh, activities already done by ECO Incorporated on this site.
Okay. Bruce?
Thank you, Mayor Jordan and City Council. It's a pleasure to be in front of you tonight and anybody that knows me will tell you, I'm never at a shortage of words when it comes to talking about Woolsey Wet Prairie. I wanted to make myself available to provide you some exciting updates about Woolsey Wet Prairie and answer any questions. It was, uh, probably almost a year ago to the date, I believe, and David Jurgens was talking about, well, we're gonna have this tour of Woolsey Wet Prairie with City Council, we're gonna take them to the cemetery, and they're also interested in the old Woolsey home place. And so I went out there the day before and, uh, thought, well, I've gotta clear some brush so we can get in and see the cemetery, they really can't see it, and then the bush honeysuckle was growing up so thick around the old house that I thought, there's not even a trail, there's no, not even a way they can walk in and, and look in the window, and so I thought, well, at best I can, uh, clear this path, and it's obviously not a structure that people would want to venture into, and, but they can walk up if I remove the brush and peer into the window, and I guess what set the City of Fayetteville apart is that the very first thing that happened that day is Mayor Jordan jumps in the window and goes in the house and the city council follows. And, uh, it really made it an exciting opportunity for me. Uh, and as, I, I live in Benton, Arkansas, uh, I came up here today and I'll drive back tonight, but this is important enough to me to be here to clarify some things and answer your questions. I'm certainly no stranger to the City of Fayetteville, and yes, when we had the WSIP going, we did have a good track record. I was not always, uh, you know, on good terms with some of the contractors, they didn't like the things I made them do, and I would hear all kinds of things like, uh, well, they don't make us do this in Texas. And I would tell them, well, there's one thing you need to remember, you're not in Texas, you're in Fayetteville, Arkansas, and this is the way Fayetteville, Arkansas does things. And so, uh, in going over some of the most recent things that have happened at Woolsey Wet Prairie, uh, Dr. J.D. Wilson, who is a herpetologist at U of A, who is doing this herpetological survey, and so ECO Inc. voluntarily sponsors a Woolsey Wet Prairie website and Woolsey Wet Prairie Facebook profile page, so I'm getting all these really awesome pictures of things to post on there. And if you recall, uh, in the video documentary that we did last year, Dr. Wilson found this Graham's crayfish snake, and it's, it's really a cool th, thing because it had not been seen in North Arkansas in over sixty years. And so this year, so it's just, he, he saved it, and we're showing it to people, and I said, well, what are you gonna do with it? I, I went to college in the seventies, back then, we put stuff in formaldehyde, I hope they don't do that anymore, and he said, no, I'm gonna release it, but there's all these other herpetologists that wanna see it first, so I'm gonna keep it and we're gonna release it. And I said, okay, when we shoot your interview out at Woolsey Wet Prairie, that's when you need to release that snake. So, in recent weeks, as they've done more monitoring, I've received pictures from Dr. Wilson, and again, this once in a, not seen in sixty years snake, one of his students is holding like seven of them, and I call that photo the, the Medusa Hand. And so I talked to Dr. Wilson yesterday and he, uh, I said, well, what's the count now? I go out there, there's traps and all your boards, some of them are very simple seed supply wood that they raise up and, and look at it. And, uh, so there's, this one snake in sixty years, how many have you captured so far? And he said sixty-five. And so, it's just a unique thing of Fayetteville's natural heritage. Uh, I love coming to Fayetteville, Fayetteville's kinda my home away from home, and I, I refer back to when the WSIP was going on, I spent a lot of time up here, and I remember, it was probably two thousand and eight in December, and I always say at the Hampton Inn, I went to my room and there was this, uh, gift ba, basket, and it said, congratulations, no one has stayed in this hotel as many nights during this year as you have. It had smoked cheese and a bottle of champagne, I swear. So, uh, we are going to continue with what we can on managing Wool, Woolsey Wet Prairie, and I'm, I'm getting, uh, and, and as Mr. Mar commented, there has been a great word with David Jurgens' departure, and, uh, he has certainly done his very best and I appreciate his cooperative efforts in trying to keep things streamlined. We have kinda expanded Woolsey Wet Prairie a little bit toward the entrance, and, because it's like a, an image thing, when you enter Woolsey Wet Prairie, it shouldn't be all this fescue. And so CH two M Hill and our herbicide contractor have been working on that, that issue. Um, also, I want to clarify on our surplus credits, and another great development, yes, there's the Medusa Hand.
It's done.
I, I also, uh, be aware, Dr. Wilson has also told us they have found no venomous snakes, it is not a habitat that's conducive to venomous snakes, uh, so it's pretty interesting to have that creature there. So, one of the other developments is what we're doing with these surplus credits, and if you recall, uh, we have generated surplus wetland credits at Woolsey Wet Prairie, and on April the twenty-fourth, two thousand and nine, David Jurgens and I went to talk to the Corps, and every year in our annual monitoring report, we included to update credit sheets and then we generated surplus credits. So, April twenty-fourth, two thousand and nine, we go meet with the Corps and ask them, well, do we have to do a prospectus? What do we do? What can we do with these surplus credits? Can we sell them? And they said, well, no, you don't have to do a prospectus, that's for a proposed generation of credits, you've already generated them. And, uh, they said, well, we really don't know, no one has ever come to us and asked us this question. And so, there's kinda been some changes in what can be done with those surplus credits and, uh, also changes in the number of credits. And so, I approached David in two thousand and twelve and I said, okay, what the Corps has now on their website is RIBITS, and it is an acronym for Regulatory Analytic and Banking Tracking System, and it has a list on their website of the mitigation banks, and since the Corps told us we can either use our surplus credits for infrastructure improvements or we can sell them, then we need to get on RIBITS, we need to get on there. And so I started that process with the Corps in about the same time, um, my mouth's very dry, the Van Ash project came up and we started exploring that, and it was only a tiny amount of credits, but here came the test, you know, can we use those credits for infrastructure improvements? And it saved the City of Fayetteville thousands and thousands of dollars because even though it was a small acreage, a part of that whole process for doing compensatory mitigation like we did at the West Side Wastewater Plant, you still have to go through all that. You have to develop a mitigation plan, you have to develop a design, even though it's something tiny, you have to de-restrict that land, you have to do five years of monitoring, and be, because it is compensatory mitigation, just like with Woolsey Wet Prairie, you can never terminate that four oh four permit. Typically, four oh four permits that do not require compensatory mitigation, like with a lot of the sewer lines, uh, that weren't a, a part of damaging the, the wetlands, uh, that permit will never expire. The, the others that we could close out, there's a clause there where we have Mayor Jordan sign it, uh, certifying the penalty of law that we follow the terms and conditions of the permit, and they closed it out. So, anyway, to cut the chase, it would've been very complicated and expensive to do mitigation for the Van Ash project, and the Corps did approve it. And so, to make, and I think there's kinda some misunderstandings with what I hear people say and, and what transpired, and so I wanted to clarify that. Um, here's an email that I got, eh, on August twelfth, uh, two thousand and twelve, and I went back to Elaine Edward, who is now the chief of the regulatory section, and I said, can you please go over with us, I wanna get a concurrence with what we were told, because we met with like five people in the Little Rock District, and what we were told that we can do with those surplus credits. And so, uh, here's her email, hi Bruce, I found my notes from the April two thousand and nine meeting, I recorded that we discussed the area becoming a bank with the addition of some property to the north, goes on and on and on, is this a part of the plan or are we just talking about the existing extra credits? I recorded that we discussed the area becoming a bank with the addition of some property to the north. Goes on and on and on. Is this a part of the plan? Or are we just talking about the existing extra credits, meaning our surplus credits? And she has in here, I have in my notes that Joyce, who was the chief of the regulatory section at the time, said the City of Fayetteville could use the extra credits or they could sell them. And so what transpired when we finally got to the point of cashing out credits for Van Ash and/or getting on RIBITS where we could sell credits, the Corps took a closer look at it. There's a letter here dated September thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen, to Mayor Jordan. And so even though they had gotten like six or seven years of monitoring reports and I put the credit work sheets in there every time, now they've decided, well, we want to revisit some of those numbers. And I'm not slamming the Corps. I just think they have regulatory rules they have to follow and they constantly, their policies evolve. And maybe it was kind of a thing like, wow, we can't let this set a precedent. This is very different. We can't let this set a precedent. So they readjusted this course. Okay, you know, you want fifty percent of something or a hundred percent of nothing. And then it said that the city will be able to use the surplus credits for, to mitigate for wetland impacts generated by the City of Fayetteville within the Illinois River watershed. So it did not say anything about selling credits. And so I guess the most compelling statement to get from a federal regulatory agency was the last paragraph. And it says, this project in the Woolsey mitigation area present a unique situation in which we are considering new assessments of wetland impacts for a finalized project and recalculation of credits generated from a completed mitigation area. Please note that the Corps Regulatory Division does not intend to use this approach with other permit actions. It would not be feasible to make this a standard practice with the numerous issued permits, mitigation sites, and wetland banks finalized in the Little Rock District. The mitigation assessment credits for this forty-three acre site will not be reconsidered in the future. So to me, that's huge. That's a one-of-a-kind thing, even though we don't get to sell the credits. I also want to clarify in working with Mr. Jurgens and Alderman Long, and I applaud his resolution to set aside the adjacent land as a mitigation bank. And, but I think there might be, so the word on the street is that I've talked to different people. There might be some confusion in there because there's one phrase, as I recall, it says, whereas the Corps of Engineers has determined that the city can use but not sell wetland credits from the expansion area. And that is not correct. Once we expand Woolsey Wet Prairie into the expansion area, we will be able to sell those credits. The term that should have been, instead of expansion area, it should have been the existing mitigation site. And so we will be able to sell credits. And then working with Mr. Marr on a very preliminary approach, the next step will be, the Corps has an optional approach where you do not have to bring them a full-blown prospectus. They said you can come in and, you know, bring an air photo, sit down with us, a project description, and a list of objectives. And what that would do is trigger our review of it, and it will trigger a site visit. And so one of the considerations is, unlike some of the stream banks that are done, they don't have to worry so much about the issue of jurisdictional waters because you're doing a named creek. It goes to the Illinois River, the White River. That's obviously jurisdictional waters of the United States. With wetlands that are out in pastures, it's a little bit more reviewed because some of them, with all the lawsuits and the Supreme Court case, the Pano's case, and significant nexus, the, that issue must be addressed with the Corps, and they will need to look at that site. We prepared some maps for them. Fortuitously, it was March twenty-fourth of this year, the Corps came out with a clarification of the final mitigation rule. And now instead of the term significant nexus, they refer to the term unidirectional flow. If you have water going through swales in a unidirectional flow that go to a named stream, then those wetlands are connected to jurisdictional waters of the United States and those wetlands are jurisdictional waters. So that gave me the comfort zone, and I think they will approve it as jurisdictional waters. Also, we've been shooting again, Neil, Billy, and I. We will, we are currently working on the sequel to the Woolsey Wet Prairie documentary, so stay tuned on that. So does anyone have any questions? I kind of thank you for being last on the list. I have the city council to myself.
Do we have any questions for Bruce?
I just have a comment to move forward with this and waive the requirements. Again, there was so much in this document, if you read it, that is so important, that sets us apart from any other city. I don't know if there's another city in the world that can take so much pride in developing a sewer plant and the wetlands that surround it. And a lot of it is because of Bruce and the work that they did. And this, this project is certainly one that our city should hold in great esteem with a great deal of pride. So thank you. And I, again, to waive a bid is a huge thing for me, but I think that this more than speaks for itself.
Mayor, and I want to make a comment because we've talked about, we've kind of mixed our two issues tonight. This contract is one hundred percent on the current wetland mitigation monitoring, maintenance plan, and a credit tracking program. This does not include any discussion related to any of our new adjacent site. And the reason that it is important for you, you know, as I, as public watch and listen to this discussion, we have had people who have inquired about the fact that, one, Wyatt Snow bid. We feel very strongly in the expertise that we have in ECO Incorporated. And if you start to talk about a new development item, then we think it's important to go back out to bid again and select because that's the point at which we're starting over with an entire new process when that decision is made. And we don't want to blur that because we've had inquiries about people who are interested in that. The criteria that you select to make that determination will determine, I'm guessing, in our experience as staff, prior performance and results will make a very important stand. But it will be a process that we'll go through for selection in any new development. And that's something we've heard from several council members on a one-on-one basis. And also just, you know, we have a resolution to study the, and go to the addition of a new wetland. And we've had people asking us, what can we sell credits for? Because if you'll remember, David's initial discussions were that, I hope that we might be able to sell the credits that we're talking about today that are limited now to just the city. So people want to make sure that they understand if we get into the credit building business to sell them, that we are actually going to get there. And they're two totally different items, again, which is why we separated them. But tonight's contract is on our existing only. And the work related to that existing contract and our plans to continue that.
I have one more comment in regard to Mr. Marr's comments. Yes, I think probably based on how the Corps has done the score sheets, we will probably generate somewhere between about two hundred credits that can be sold on the mitigation bank part. And it will be some exercise, so to speak, of, well, how do we value those? What are people willing to pay for them so they don't have to do the mitigation and the monitoring and what have you? And so whether it's going to be a profit-making venture, that's yet to be seen. It depends on what we can sell the credits for, how much time are we looking at? But I also ask you to look at it this way. You can't sell credits from Kessler Mountain. You can't sell credits from the lake, the stuff at Lake Fayetteville. And I applaud you for doing that because you did the right thing because Fayetteville is about the environment. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce. Wait a minute, I got to get some public comment. Anyone like to address this from the public? No? Okay. Now we have a motion in the second to go to the second reading, right? Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Tannet?
Yes.
Shotmark?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Marsh?
And ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving an agreement with the Environmental Consulting Operations, Inc. for wetlands mitigation site monitoring and management for two thousand and fourteen in the amount of thirty-three thousand dollars.
Let me just suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading.
I have a motion in the second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Tannet?
Yes.
Shotmark?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
And ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving an agreement with the Environmental Consulting Operations Incorporated for wetlands mitigation site monitoring and management for two thousand and fourteen in the amount of thirty-three thousand dollars.
Any final comments from the council? Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Tannet?
Yes.
Shotmark?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Okay. What announcements do we have?
Mayor, I want to remind everyone that we have a lot of visitors coming to town this weekend for the University of Arkansas graduation on Saturday, May the tenth. So welcome visitors and be aware of people who might turn the wrong way down a one-way street. Be careful as we have more people in town. We also will have a Meet Your Trails kickoff program next Saturday, May the seventeenth. Nine AM, we'll meet at the pavilion at Lake Wilson for the Joe Clark Trail Loop. And we're starting a program, there are four of these scheduled, where we will have a nature or a trail walk with members of city administration and department heads. So if citizens want a chance to see trails they may not be aware of and visit with people that they might not have met, that they want to talk to, they can come check out a new trail. We also have some potential severe weather risk at the end of this week. And we want to encourage citizens that we have the Fayetteville Alert System available to be signed up and be notified. It's on the city's main website page. If you click on the Fayetteville Alert System icon, it'll instruct you on how to enroll. It is extremely important if people enroll that they must enter an address. This is Polygon technology, which means that it notifies you when you are in the path of a storm and it must have an address to do that. So just putting your phone number in will not register you for weather warnings. It requires a location. Also, on Monday, May the twelfth, at five thirty PM, we will have the opening of our Mount Sequoia Gardens Improvement Project. So we invite everyone to come up on Monday and celebrate with us the new lookout area there.
Okay. Anything else? Yes.
In addition to the May tenth, the UA graduation, May seventeenth, the School of Law is using the Town Center at two PM. So you'll see a lot of traffic with people in gowns on May seventeenth, School of Law graduation.
Well, I do want to, I'm sorry, if you get a chance to see our government channel staff, I hope you'll congratulate them. They received two golds and one silver for both our recycling team, extended version commercial that they developed that's running in theaters and on television, our recycling team edited version, and then our Recycle Something Imaginary Playground advertisements, which are competing nationally for awards. It's kind of like the telly, if you will, of government items. And we're so proud of the staff and the work product that they're doing.
Mayor, if I could have one thing, I'd like to pass on some good news to the city council. Several meetings ago, you passed a refinancing for the sewer bonds. And we were notified by Dennis Hunt of our underwriter Stevens, Inc., that in fact there's a net savings of about three hundred thousand dollars. They were sold today, so.
Sold it today. Forgot about that. Okay. Anything else? All right. Thank you all very much. We're adjourned.